Ready Berkeley? Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. Nice to see everybody this fine November 13th morning. It was a little crisp out there this morning, so thank you all for coming out. I will call our meeting to order at 9:01 a.m. And I'll ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem.
(Singing)
Nice to see we have our old anthem back. Thank you very much for that, Berkeley. Before I jump into the agenda, I was away our last council meeting, so I want to just take a moment to welcome and invite Mr. Pat Vincent to the council into Drayton Valley. I didn't get a chance to say welcome at the last council meeting, so thank you for coming on board. And we look forward to the next few months of working with you and all the knowledge and experience that you will bring to the town of Drayton Valley and to all of us. So, thank you very much for jumping on board with us. And yeah, we welcome you. And I think, and I want to say thank you to Deputy Evans, too, for chairing that meeting. Thank you very much. And then I think I will hand it over to you. You have an introduction this morning as well.
Firstly, thank you, Madam Mayor, for the warm welcome. The town of Drayton Valley has been very gracious and embracing and accepting me as their second favorite son. So, I appreciate that very, very much. My pleasure, Madam Mayor and members of council, to introduce our new interim executive assistant to the C.O. and to Mayor and council. And I'd ask Ms. Erin Neely to rise and identify herself.
Good morning.
Erin comes to the town of Drayton Valley with a lot of administrative experience, including some experience in H.R., which is really an asset. So, please, you know, make sure that she has a warm welcome. And any of your needs now will be handled through Erin. And Erin is located, of course, and next door to the C.O.'s office in Bree's office. And she'll be with us for a period of 18 months while Bree is on her maternity leave. Secondly, Madam Mayor, members of council, I wanted to thank and acknowledge Berkeley, who has come in under the weather. We have nobody else to operate our tech during council meetings, so he's made a personal sacrifice to be here today. Berkeley, thank you very much for soldiering on. And it's greatly appreciated by myself and council.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Berkeley, and thank you, Mr. Vincent. And welcome, Erin. We're very excited to have you on board. And if you have any questions, you know where to reach all of us. So, welcome to the team. First, I'll throw out there, number one is, are there any additions this morning to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, if I might be permitted to submit, under section 14 council item, 14.1 round table, I'd like to add the item federal cap on oil and gas. And I know Madam Mayor will speak to this particular matter.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. So, 14.1A, we'll do a discussion around the federal government's cap on oil production. And then as well, Mr. Vincent, I'm just wondering, there was a challenge that was received from Drayton Valley Community Learning. Did we want to add that for a discussion under 14.1 as well as an item?
Certainly can, Madam Mayor. I know I have it on my agenda for the management team meeting, so we'll be discussing it at the administrative level tomorrow. But certainly, having the Mayor and council signal that the town of Drayton Valley is certainly on site and going to rise to the occasion of this particular challenge will show that particular leadership. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. So, we'll have that as under 14 council items. 14.1B will be the Drayton Valley Community Learning Challenge. So, that is it for the agendas or for the additions? Anything else from council? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda with the additions of 14.1A and 14.1B? Councilor Kamana, thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the October 30th, 2024 regular meeting of council minutes? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt those, please? Thank you very much. Deputy Evans? All in favor? That is carried. We have no proclamations and no public hearings this morning. We do have two delegations. First delegation up is 7.1, which is Longhorn Electrical and Contracting delegation. Good morning and welcome. If you want to come down to the podium up here, that would be wonderful. Thank you very much for joining us this morning.
Anyway, one, it's showing a dollar. So, $67,000. Sorry. $27700. And I mean, I don't think we've ever been late on anything, you know, for taxes or utilities or anything for the company. And this kind of comes as a surprise in the mail. And the reason behind it was the address. And so, we originally started in Buck Lake and then moved out by Violet Grove last fall. And so, when we finally got the notice and the penalty, it had said return to sender, but we had never gotten anything for, you know, six months. And then, you know, a $1,000 penalty on top. So, I was just hoping today that I could maybe get that waived. I don't know if that's possible, but we do have the address changed now. Everything is up to snuff. And, you know, moving forward, it'll be seamless. Just this one was maybe a whoops on our part, but we really had no idea, so.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate you coming in. I know it always takes courage to come in and ask for things like this. So, council and administration appreciates you coming in. So, what I'll do then is I'll open it up for any maybe questions. We do have this as business arising. So, rather than doing both of our delegations and then going to that, I'll open it up for any questions that council may have. Councilor McGee?
First of all, they didn't, and I don't see it here. Your name is?
Chad Klapp. Sorry about that. Yeah.
Chad, so we're out at Buck Lake, moving to Violet Grove. Change of address doesn't get here. My sense is that somebody's going to say that the responsibility, you know, you've got to pay taxes every year. So, I'm going to get that sense that that might come from administration. Is there anything more that you can say about, you know, you're just busy and you just, it just doesn't?
Well, it's-
Get something in the mail, just the way it is, right?
Yeah. I mean, our 2023 taxes were paid up, no problem. And then, I mean, I thought maybe there would have been a return to sender notification earlier. But I mean, it's, it looks like it was the end of May. And then I just received this October 22nd was when we got the notice and the penalty and everything. So, I mean, that's, you know, six months. I just thought it was really strange, you know, that that would have, that there wouldn't have been a red flag somewhere that our address was wrong and we could have gotten on top of it. So, it's strange because our utilities, you know, we've been through two shops in town in our utilities. All of our, you know, the gas power, all that has all been switched over. I don't know, I'm not really sure what went on with the town stuff. Because, I mean, we renew our business license every year. So, that would have been updated address. Just with the taxes, yeah, it was just kind of a surprise, so.
So, if I, I just want to try to understand, too, Chad, that it's your shops in Violet Grove, but you had a shop in Drayton Valley? I'm not sure what you-
Sorry. Well, our, our physical shop is in town, but our mailbox, so our company mailbox was Buck Lake where we lived. So, we'd get all the company mail, all their end personal. And then when we moved here, it got switched back to our Violet Grove address, which is a rural mailbox, just for mail.
Okay. Thanks, Chad.
Okay.
Councilor Kamana?
Thank you, thank you, Chad. I think Councilor McGee asked the question. I just wanted a little bit more clarification on what's in Violet Grove and what's, what goes in Drayton Valley. But you answered that question already. Thank you, Chad.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councilor Evans?
Your, your utilities for your shop in town here, that monthly bill has been going to the right address?
It has, yeah. Yeah.
From, from when you changed it?
Yeah. That's correct.
So, it must have, you would have updated that. Did you update that address then at the town here? I'm just not sure how one-
Yeah, all of that's been fine. I mean, and then we eventually switched to just an email bill in the last couple of months.
Okay.
But yeah, the utilities, I mean, that always came in as mail. Anything, anything else was fine. It was just-
Like you say, your business license, that, are you to the right address?
Everything, yeah. Yeah. And, you know, looking back, I mean, it's, you do so many things in a day. I couldn't tell you if we did phone in and do it, but it seems strange that we wouldn't have with, with everything, right? Especially a bill of this size, so.
And in the end, ultimately, we, we rely on, on the, the business or the residents to, to submit the, you know, the change in address. So, it just seems strange that everything else was switched over, but the taxes weren't. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Clerk?
Yeah, I guess I have a question for administration. So, when it comes to taxes and any sort of, let's call them overdue or arrears or anything like that, what's the process? So, do we just keep sending mail out and sending mail out and sending mail out? Do we make any phone calls or emails or anything like that?
It depends what we have on file. But standard is whatever land title gives us, that's where we send the tax notice, unless updated otherwise by the resident. And just to touch on the reason that it would go different than utilities is because the owner of the property isn't always the one that pays utilities. And that's why it would go to different addresses.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Chad. We're going to move on to our second delegation and then we'll have a little bit further conversation after we have both of the delegations that are presented this morning. And if there's any other questions, then we'll ask you if you just want to wait a few minutes.
Okay. Sounds really good.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. So, next up this morning, we have 8.2, which is Drayton Valley Historical Society this morning. Do you want to come on down to the podium? Welcome again and good morning.
So, good morning. Thank you for allowing us to come for our annual visit. So, I think about several weeks ago, y'all got a package about kind of what we've done in the year. So, part of this is just an update, letting you know that 2024 was a wonderful year for us. We were extremely busy and we accomplished a lot. So, just a few things I want to highlight that's progressed a little bit farther. So, in my report, I mentioned that we were donating. In 2016, we received the original war memorial panels from the Legion. So, as any museum, we, we take stuff. So, we took it, put it in storage. And just by chance, we have now donated it with, with, cooperated with the Legion to the Royal Alberta Museum. So, they were having coffee one day at their office and talking about, oh, we have the first conceptual drawing of the panel. Oh, this is kind of cool. And then the assistant curator who's there was Kirsten Schuman, who used to be our summer student for seven years. And she said, oh, my gosh, I think the museum has the paintings. So, basically, through all this, we worked it out and the RAM came out and looked. And last week, they came and got the eight original panels of the 27 local war veterans. So, that's going to the RAM. Probably right after Christmas, they're going to do a little bit of restoration work on it, color preservation, color enhancement. And then hopefully, a few months after that, it's going to be in their military and history collection exhibit for everyone to see. And when it's being restored and prepared, it's going to be in the foyer for the public to come and look at it. So, a lot of the Legion members are quite excited. And we're quite excited that it actually has found a home where people will be able to see it and our residents, community will be able to look at it. So, that was exciting. Other exciting thing is, yesterday, Lola and me, we, I've been trying to promote The Rock, okay? The Anderson's Rock is what I've named it in front. So, just, they, they read the Free Press, the young gentleman from Radioactive. He's from Jasper and he always reads the Free Press. He just thinks it's a good little paper. And he happened to see our article when we did that, when we did the big sign commemorating and recognizing Mr. Anderson. Well, they phoned us and they wanted to come out and do an interview with me and Lola. So, he came out, had a great interview, talked a lot about, you know, The Rock, you know, what is it? Where did it come from? How did you guys get it? So, it's going to be on Radioactive. And his show, Liam, is in the afternoon. We will get a link as to when he's going to do it. And he did also come out because his bosses in the spring are going to be a week segment on the title called Things That Are Big. So, he came out and if that goes on, when that goes in the segment, that will be across Canada. So, we were going, so Drayton Valley and The Rock will be across Canada. So, one reason I'm bringing up The Rock is I would like to really, Anderson's Rock is to encourage the town that, like I said in my thing, it's like the Mondaire sausage or the Ukrainian egg. I think I would like to see the town and us work together more to promote that rock. It's unique. I've looked around trying to find other concretions like that that's on pylons, and I can't find anything. There's a bunch of concretions close to Medicine Hat by Orion. But it's, and it's a big field. I think it's, it's some, it's some sort of tourist attraction, but there's concretions all over the field. Some have worn down. There are some that are still round, but they don't look as big as ours. And ours is on, on three pylons, you know? So, so I'm working hard at that. I've submitted The Rock to AMA because AMA, they do their quarterly newsletters, our Brooks. And they had the Mondaire sausages and they put, you know, where is that? So, I said, okay, that's in Mondaire. And here's a picture of our rock. I explained the size and the diameter, circumference. So, I'm hoping in the spring, we'll get to have the back page of where is that thing and to get people out to Drayton Valley. So, I'm doing that. And my next step is Guinness Book of Records. But there's lots of thing. I got to get like an engineer out to actually, you know, measure the circumference and we've got to do more scientific stuff. It only costs five pounds to register. So, that's my, that's my plan over winter to get, try and get us into the Guinness Book of Records. So, that was exciting. That was such a fun thing on working with The Rock. And the other thing I want to touch base on is the museum. We're sort of changing a little bit. People will come to the museum to look at objects, but we've noticed an uptick in people wanting to research. So, what we're going to do this winter is our little archive room in the back, we're putting it to the main part of the museum, setting it up so people can come in to do more research. So, we'd like to be open, you know, let's say, in the winter months, you know, a couple of days a week for a few hours so people can come and research. You know, we have all the Western reviews. We've got so much archival stuff, so much photographs. So, that's kind of our focus this year. So, we want to become more just than a museum of stuff for people to look at, like objects. We want them to be able to research. You know, we want to work together with the Legacy Society. I want to put our call for more archives. I'd like to work with the town and the county because I know you guys have archives. I just don't know where you guys put them. Like, you guys should have so much archival stuff that we, you know, we would like to get something like that going. We're going to be looking at taking some training with the Archives Society and at their next course. It's a five-day course on how to set up beginner, how to set up archives, how to handle them and what to do. I just think it's important because we all have a lot of documents and stuff we want to save. So, this archive thing segues into Charlie. Go ahead.
You can see the enthusiasm here. You know how she keeps a fire lit under all of us? It's, she's our president and that's her job. Yeah. We've, I've said before, and we've been here before, we need space. We don't have any room. But the big problem now, as Sandra mentioned, is the archives. And they're very important to the history of the area. And we don't have room for them to be taken care of properly. Our buildings aren't equipped for that. Archives need special attention for, ideally, temperature and humidity controlled space. I don't expect we'll end up with that in whole, but we do need a building and primarily for archives. And without it, we're going to, they're going to start deteriorating and we'll start losing them. We've talked about buildings before and gradually the size has come down and down and down, hopefully to more reasonable. Right now, we're looking at modular buildings that can just be moved in and set on site. And I think that'll be the more economical way to go. We've got a spot just to the north of the church there that there's room for a building. And all of the services are right there. The water and sewer and power and gas, they're all right there on the spot. So, there's no big cost to bringing the services in. It's just to get a building, set it on a foundation and hook stuff up, get the electrical and so on. So, that's what we're looking at now. And this summer, we'll be exploring it further for how much it's going to cost, hopefully. And probably in time for your budget for 2026, we'll have some figures and be looking for help, for financial help for a building. Other than that, she does all the work. I just show up once in a while.
So, if there's any questions, just a quick little note on the archives. We did find in, in the upstairs of the Old Anglican Church a whole bunch of documents on the Lady Farren Mission House that was here in 1956 that was established. Basically, it was the nursing station to, and it came in to look after the, the logging industry because so many men were getting hurt. So, we found a whole bunch of documents, receipts. The Nurse Higgs, we found her diaries. And it was, they were almost like nurse practitioners on who, what patients they looked after. We found out documents on when they went out to the schools around the community, Lodge Pole, Poplar Ridge, and how many kids they vaccinated for all these different vaccinations, dachtheria, whooping cough. So, that's going to be a display we set up in the fall at the, at the county just about the nursing station. And there's just a lot of, it was fun looking at all those documents. So, yeah, archives are important and we just want to start preserving archives in our communities. So, we're open for questions. Well, thank you very much.
I just want one more comment. I've been here, I've lived in Drayton Valley since 1960. And there've been a lot of changes, of course. But it's interesting when you start looking back in the history. Common conception here is that basically this town came into being in 1953 when oil was discovered. And I guess as a town, it did. But there was a lot here before that. It was a community that was very much alive and active and had been here for a long time. It dates back to 1910. And so, it's, it's not, we're not just brand new. It's a bit, it's been here a long time and the history is there. It's really very interesting.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation this morning.
Questions, ask her.
Yeah. And you are full of so much energy. Thank you very much for your energy and your passion. You were just recently recognized at the Paul Harris Awards and I can see definitely why. So, congratulations on that. Thank you for presenting. Lots of exciting news today to us as well. I'll open it up for questions this morning. Councilor Kamana?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah. Amazing work. You've both done a lot to the community. So, thank you very much for that. The question is, I guess, about archiving. And I know we have lots, I've been to museums that there's, there's lots to archive as well. Have we looked at digital archives or anything that we can maybe digitalize?
Say that one more time, Amila.
Digital archives, like, you know, scanning them in and then maybe have it online that people can-
We scan most, a lot of our archives, the photographs are scanned. The documents, we just haven't had the time to scan them. And I think the putting them online, it's kind of a whole technical thing that's happening, yeah. So, we actually haven't scanned a lot of our paper, paper. But our photographs are scanned and they're just on our software we have, but not online.
Okay. Thank you.
But our newspapers that we took in a year ago, the 30 years, they're just finalizing. They've scanned them. They should be up on, you have a online library soon. Because like Touchbase, so it's almost been a year since they've had those 30, 35 years of the Western Review, so.
Wow. If, if, you know, how can we put it out to the community? I guess I didn't know that as well.
Soon as it's officially up, like I've been posting it, soon it's officially up, probably Amanda will say that it's officially up. Yeah. Because you'll, Amanda was there, so yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Wonderful. Any other questions? Councilor McGee?
I just, I was thinking about the gazebo project, but I see at the very back of the presentation in our council agenda that it's, this is a new project to replace the gazebo project. Can you tell me?
Yeah. We're not, we decided not to go ahead with the gazebo because it was just too much money. And then we tried to scale it down and, and the vision of what some people wanted the gazebo to look like and some people, it wasn't working. But it was just too much money. It was like $160,000. And we just thought maybe a community, a building that would be better would be something like an archive building. But yet, it would still be available to groups, like, you know, make it large enough where groups could have meetings and stuff. And the archives would be available to the community. But yeah, the gazebo's thing.
Just the, there was a reasonable amount of funds that were donated for the gazebo. And the donor, we've talked with them and they're agreeable to going into a community project. So, it's, the funds are there, sitting on our savings account, just waiting for something to develop. It's just a night and it's a nice nest egg, a start for the funding. We'll need help with it certainly, but.
So, you had also, I believe, applied for a grant for that project? Were you successful in that grant? Or have you applied and can those, you haven't applied?
No, I don't believe we applied for a grant. I think we're thinking of applying for a grant for the gazebo.
We haven't applied yet. Before we can apply for the grant funding, we need a cost figure, a good estimate and preferably at least- and preferably at least a rough plan of what's, what we're looking at. But very definitely we will be applying for a grant. If it works out, that would provide as much as half of the funding involved for the building.
Oh, perfect. So the building still fits in that criteria of the grant. Perfect, perfect. Uh, any other questions, Councilor Evans?
So I guess from here, you're working on the design that you want and then ultimately the cost of the building and then you'll come back.
Yes, yes. So for the archive, if we're talking, the archive building, we decided to go modular just because I think it's probably more cost effective than stick building and then everything will be there. So yeah, we're just trying to come up with the size and then we'll be applying for grants and whatever, but yeah.
Okay, perfect. Wonderful. Well, thank you very much for presenting. We really appreciate you coming in this morning. So with our two delegations this morning, we have two discussions in front of us. Business arising, 8.1 for Longhorn Electrical and Contracting. Any discussion comments, how council would like to proceed with this this morning? Oh, absolutely. If you have a few words more to say, come on down. Oh yeah, no worries.
I was just thinking, I wonder, you know, if there's any way you can set up maybe a, like a month after, after it's sent out, this is, you know, May 9th it was sent, you know, by June 9th, maybe if they haven't been paid, is there anybody at the town that can just even make a phone call and say, hey, you know, you have 30 days to, to pay this, it's getting behind, you know, you want to avoid a penalty? Is that, is that maybe an option just to help? You know, there's, there's a lot of guys kind of running the same size businesses as us in town and I would suspect, you know, I mean, I made the mistake, I would suspect they've, you know, there's a few others as well, just to kind of help everyone, you know? Is that, is that an option?
That's something we can definitely discuss with administration for sure.
Okay.
Yeah. And see what they, we think, I don't know what that would all, uh, amount to in, in capacity for, you know, how many people are, are maybe in arrears for that 30 days and then what it would take to, to call out or do we send out a second notice or how that works? Maybe I'll just hand it over to Mr. Tweedle just to answer that question.
Yeah, I think with that, it would be difficult because a lot of people don't actually pay their taxes until June 30th. So we don't know if you didn't get the notice or you're just waiting till the last day to pay. So for administration to contact upwards of 3,000 people, it's kind of unrealistic in my opinion. Yeah, so I guess that'd be the one thing it's, are you, did you not get the notice or are you just deciding not to pay?
Well, when I.
I know in your case, it's specific as you didn't receive the notice, but in the instance of other people, for example, well, some people just aren't going to pay whether we remind them or not.
Uh, Mr. Vincent?
Madam Mayor, through the chair to Mr. Clapp. The mailing address that you had previously, was that mail not being forwarded to your new mailing address?
Should have been. You know, it's, yeah, it was a Canada Post office out in Buck Lake and then all of that stuff was forwarded. And when we did move, we did ask for it, please forward it all.
Yeah, so, excuse me, sir. So that's the unfortunate part of it. I think everything worked as per the system, how it's set up legislatively, how the town proceeded. And you should have, you know, received your forwarding mail with your change of mailing address. So though I won't take a shot at Canada Post who apparently are going out on strike any day, but it just shows me the problems that we have with that particular structure and that particular system, which is very regrettable.
I, I think when I talked to the lady at the front, she said that, uh, no one gets a notice that they're late until the second stage penalty. Is that correct? So in December? Okay, and then I think that's a $2,000 fine.
Uh, it's 15% each time.
I see, okay. Yeah, so I mean, I guess with a mortgage, most times your taxes are, the bank will pay your taxes for you, so you don't pay, really pay attention to it that much. It's kind of taken care of. With this shop, I guess I should rewind. This was the first year that we had bought in it. So previous, we were renting in town and then we'd actually purchased this one and, you know, I, I guess it's all kind of new to us. There's not really an excuse, I just wasn't aware of the system and, um, you know, kind of how it's laid out. So if it's sent out mid-May and then I get the, yeah, the penalty in October, I just, unfortunate. I, you know, and I mean, we would have paid it if it, if it was, if it was in our face. I mean, we would have, you know, come down and, and paid it right away or sent a check or whatever we could even, you know, on the phone app for our taxes, so.
And I think that's the unfortunate situation is that everything on our end was correct and it sounds like most, other than updating the mailing address with us specifically per, um, I could read out the section of the MGA, but it's, if you want it changed other than land titles, it's a requirement to file it in writing. But so everything that we did on our side was per the Municipal Government Act as we're legislatively required to.
So as a municipality, the Municipal Government Act is kind of our bible, kind of the, the how-to of how municipal governments operate on day-to-day, right? So what Mr. Tweedle is making reference to is that, uh, under those regulations, we had kind of checked all of our, you know, boxes and did everything. So it, it is an unfortunate circumstance that this happened, whether it didn't get sent out or whether Canada Post didn't forward it or, or anything like that. And again, I appreciate you coming in. We as council have to also take into consideration that this is a large portion of our revenue as a tax base. So when people come to us, we have to consider that quite heavily because if we were to, you know, waive penalties or waive taxes for everyone, we wouldn't be able to plow our roads or cut our grass or keep our lights on. So it's, uh, it is, it is a, it might only be $1,000, but it is a big ask for a municipality and for council to make a decision like this. So I will open it up for further discussion from council if they have anything. One question I do have for administration is we did create a policy last year when we had had a couple people come in requesting, was it a rebate on the penalties or on the taxes themselves? And that policy allowed administration to be able to waive certain fees or taxes up to. Could you just remind council what that was? Sorry?
So that was in terms of utilities and we do have an amount that we can forgive and we do use that for decisions along the way, which is why you don't see people in here asking about their utilities all the time. We do have an amount. For penalties on taxes, it is a very, very slippery slope. The MGA, it, it, it's pretty guided in terms of this is what we do and seven days after the tax notice is sent, it's deemed received per the MGA. And the reason for that is because of the sheer volume of people that we're dealing with and we can't control all the aspects of addresses on the outside. So that's why the, the MGA, a lot of like obligation on the owner to know that if you have a property, that you will have property taxes unfortunately. And it is not, it, it doesn't happen every day, like we don't have someone's address every day, but there's, there tends to be every, every once in a while you have one where you either aren't checking that, that mailing address because you have different addresses and, and the land titles just has the, it happens to have the property address and you don't have a mailing set up for that. But in terms of, so, so yeah, everything was, we, we process taxes per the legislation, which is sending out the tax notices, giving the deadline and then sending a notice in October, which we do one extra step that we're, is it October, Connor? That we send a reminder with the, with the late? But yeah, so, so we do one extra step more than what MGA states. The MGA is very, it, it puts a lot of obligation on the property owner to know that they have taxes and to come pay them. However, we do want extra step in there, mailing one extra reminder in the fall to make sure that they know that the December penalty is coming up. So it is, it is unfortunate and it, it, it happens not, not that often. I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we have a lot of instances where people ask to get their, their penalties reversed because of addresses specifically. But yeah, unless otherwise notified, we do use the, the land titles, that's all we have, right? And we can't go out there guessing which properties, utilities match up, you know, that utilities is one system and those get billed one way and taxes get billed to, to the property address on land title files unless otherwise notified.
Thank you. Mr. Vincent?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, this administration is not callous, nor is it insensitive to our residents and our taxpayers. It's a most unfortunate set of circumstances. In my lengthy career, I've seen compelling cases where there's been deaths in the family, changes of executors, divorces, all kinds of reasons. And it unfortunately is incumbent upon the property owner. It's their responsibility to ensure their taxes paid. And with all due respect and without offending Longhorn Electric or Mr. Clapp, administration recommends that council denies the request for the waiver of the penalties that have been requested.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. With that, we're looking at making a motion. Ms. Thompson has motions on the screen. Do you have one further question, Councilor Clark?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about communication on this sort of stuff. So, you know, we sent it in the mail, we don't make phone calls. Do we, do we use social media at all?
Yeah, over the, sorry, over the, uh, uh, once the tax notice has been issued, we do multiple reminders on social media up to the deadline of June 30th. We don't make phone calls until there's a certain arrears and then we start, of course, making calls. But we do have multiple social media reminders that go out. Um, I, I believe we, I, I don't know for sure, but I'm, we might even post it in the paper.
Yes, I was gonna ask you, the paper. And then also when we send out our utility bills, do we also put, we also communicate where the taxes are going, all that sort of stuff, right? And give a briefing as to, hey, here's our budget, here's taxes and, um, do we do anything like that around that time as well? Think we do?
We send, we just send a, a breakdown, budget breakdown with the tax notices.
Yeah.
I don't think we do it with the utilities. Because we, I mean, I, I, I guess we could. A lot of utilities are paid by non-property owners, but I mean, I guess if they get the information, it's not harmful information, but, but currently we don't send tax information with utility bills.
Councilor McGee?
In your time at the Finance Department, have we, have we ever forgiven any penalties?
Nope.
Secondly, when you're sort of looking through, and I, I don't know, is there, is there a way that you might red flag? Like I think household, my taxes are what they are and I, what, if it just happens, I don't even know. But if, if there are a penalty of $1,000, it seems to me a reason to come into the chambers and say, that's, that's a lot of money. Is there a way to, to look at that and, and, and say, have you, have you forgotten? I'm just, I'm just trying to be a small community person here at the moment, right?
Yeah. That's, that's an administrative task that would take an extensive amount of time, not impossible, but certainly we would need to add to Department. I mean, I think that, that's the reason for why the MGA is, is laid out the way it is, is, is to make it not as administratively heavy on, it's, it's not that we wouldn't do it if we couldn't, it's just that the resources, that's another impact on the taxpayer, right, is, is another step of, of chasing the people that, you know, the few people out of the 7,000 that pay taxes or not 7,000, 5,000 maybe.
Yeah, no, I thought that would be the case and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Vincent. Given your time in the, in government, that, that somewhere along the line, you, you need to say this is what the rules are. And if you start to, to waiver and you start to bend, it really all have to be bent, right, at that point in time? You just can't. And I understand that and I appreciate you putting that on the table.
And just, just one extra thing is that two years ago, I believe, time flies, maybe two, maybe three years ago, when Land Titles was like six months behind. At that point, we didn't forgive penalties either. That was not our obligation to do because it was not our, it wasn't on us. If we didn't get the information that somebody's taxes information had changed via land titles, that's what we get, right? We get information on property ownership through land titles and we input that and we send that. That, that's how we process taxes. And at that point, because obviously it was land titles mistake, the government had a refund program that people could apply to. But as an example, even during that time, that was not an obligation on us.
Uh, one last question, Councilor Gomana?
Thank you. Just wondering about the, the process of tax waivers, right? You know, now we had, administration had those conversations and here we are discussing it in council. Is there an opportunity for us, maybe Pat, you could tell us with your experience, to do something like the utilities that we did and have a, have a separate, I guess, process before it gets to council?
I, I would strongly recommend against that. This is, I, I, I can't stress enough what kind of doors that would be opening. Is every single person with a penalty would come with a story of why penalties, penalties, yeah, that's the way that we leverage our, our tax revenue and the way we run our operations. I, I would really suggest, unlike utilities, utilities is supposed to be a business unit on its own and it pays for its own infrastructure, whereas property tax dollars fund our municipal operations. So I would not suggest having, um, that kind of a process. I think there, there is a reason for taxes, tax forgiveness to come to council.
My, I guess, sorry, my question is that, you know, each time it need to come to council and that's a process and that's a time-consuming process. Is there a way to streamline that piece, right? That, that was my question. I, I totally agree with what you're saying.
Madam Mayor, through the chair, to Councilor Gomana and all members of council, I'm not aware of any other process. Council cannot delegate. If they could, then the CEO could decide on it, but under legislation, ultimately any request for any waiver or forgiveness of taxes or tax penalties must come before council to decide. So it's part of the process, you know, of natural justice and procedural fairness. Otherwise, if a taxpayer could not come before council, that'd be an administrative tribunal making that decision instead of the elected officials. So it is the system that we're saddled with, but it is council's responsibility ultimately. Thank you very much. So Madam Mayor, we have the recommendation up on the screen for your consideration.
Thank you very much for that. So I'll be looking for a motion from council to either deny or accept the request this morning for the late payment of taxes as requested by Longhorn Electric and Contracting. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion this morning? Councilor Evans, thank you very much.
I'm just gonna make a comment first. As you've seen, there's, there's heavily structured process there and, and it's there for a reason and you've obviously heard that the obligation is on the, the owner of the property to, to make those changes when we're, when required. Us as a council, we need to be careful with decisions like this because it, it can turn into a slippery slope where someone sees that, that for various reasons, some not your own, um, you know, you've, you've got behind. And, and as you said, you would have been more than happy to pay those taxes, but we need to be careful that we make the, when we make a decision to, to waive the fees and, and next thing you know, there's gonna be more than just you. So that's what we need to keep in mind. I feel for your situation and I, I. I feel for your situation and I understand that's a lot of money, but there's also a reason why that structure is in place the way it is, to kind of keep that from happening. So we, I'm going to go ahead and make this motion that we deny your request, okay?
Okay. And I wonder if you could prorate it, maybe the penalty, so say, one month late, you know, as a one or two percent and then carries on so that it doesn't get out of hand to 15% by the time you see the notice, you know? So then if a person does forget and you get that one or two percent penalty, you know, into July, then I think a lot of these would be cleared up right away instead of that long wait, right? And then getting kind of hammered with a $1,000 and then 2,000.
Yeah, I mean, the small penalty is in June. That's a small penalty for just that year's taxes. Then you do get a notice in the fall before the 15% is applied, which we often see is what Connor was referring to earlier, is that people sometimes choose to pay that penalty to pay it late for various cash flow reasons. But that notice that they get in the fall before that January penalty is applied, that's when we see the most amount of the outstanding amounts get cleared up because the 15% is a big one. It's also applied to your entire outstanding balance, which if you only have one year's outstanding is a manageable amount. But if you have multiple years outstanding, it builds on top of each other. But we do have that notice that goes out in. And our property tax penalties are regulated by bylaw. So the bylaws are set, council creates that bylaw for penalties and how it's going to be administered at the time that we do the mill rates as well. And so that's, if council chooses to change the way penalties are administered, that's something that has to be changed in the bylaw in the upcoming year.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Clapp brings forward a very excellent suggestion. In my experience, municipalities across the province choose varying approaches. So maybe like many businesses, you get charged one and a half percent per month sort of thing. Some municipalities have done that, that it's two or three percent per month. So you get a notice, you know, so tax deadline is on June 30th and you haven't paid, you get automatically assessed, you know, that two or three percent penalty and you get a notice right away, which is the wake-up, the shock, oh, I forgot to pay my taxes. And by the way, the penalty is going to be three percent for my forgetting promise or oversight or whatever the case is. So as my chief financial officer has indicated, it would be something I would recommend council give some consideration to next spring when we pass the tax rate bylaw to review the penalties to ensure that they maybe are more fair or less, as you've suggested, and give people the opportunity not to pay as severe a penalty if there is some error or some reason that taxes didn't get paid, that they don't get hammered with a substantial, you know, penalty. So excellent suggestion. I'll take it under advisement, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I'm going to go to Counselor Evans. Counselor Evans, could you just please read the motion one more time before I call comment question debate?
Okay. Make the motion, that council deny the request for waiver of the penalty for late payment of taxes as requested by Longhorn Electrical and Contracting.
Thank you very much for the motion. I'll open it up now for comment question debate on the motion. Counselor McGee?
I think the suggestion is very reasonable, but I thought what you had said, Vera, that the, in June, explain to me, I have to pay my taxes by the end of June. And if I don't pay, what's a month? Am I going to get a reminder? And are we already doing that? It's my question.
You do not get a reminder between the tax notice and the due date. So if you do not get your tax notice, you will have one penalty applied to just that year's taxes. So just the balance, just for that year. It's a lower amount, I'm just, it's 15%, but just on that one, that balance.
Right. And so the suggestion is to look at, perhaps there's a way for us to sort of look at 3% as opposed to 15 and then prorate it.
Or prorate 15% over six months or whatever it is. My guess is that the ending result would be, to the town would be similar, but I'd have to do more research to know. It might alleviate a couple people. Yeah.
And I think the other question I might have is, what in the end, generally would we have taxes unpaid? What percentage are, do we have in unpaid taxes?
Yeah, I don't have a percent right now. We have, it's much lower than it used to be, but yeah, probably 15%. So we were much higher a while ago. We've done a lot of work on getting that number down, which can be very difficult because sometimes you have contact information's not always there, mortgage information's not always there. And so we have to do a lot of puzzle piecing together to try to get that under control, but we've come a long ways, so yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor. And again, I appreciate you coming in this morning and telling us or expressing your desire for the penalties to be removed. As you've heard, that we fall under the Municipal Government Act, there is restrictions and regulations that we have to definitely follow. A lot of good conversation this morning. We're just heading into budget discussions here in the coming weeks. So I appreciate a few of your suggestions there. Council has actually looked at the bylaw previously a few years ago when we went through economic downturn in the community. We had quite a few businesses and residents actually come into the chamber. So we did look at that bylaw and we did change what those penalties look like. So as Mr. Vincent had suggested, that's something that we can definitely look into and consider as we start to move into those budget discussions. So again, I appreciate you coming in this morning. There is a motion on the floor. I will now call the motion, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
So that was a business arising from 8.1. Business arising from 8.2 is Drayton Valley Historical Society. They are no longer with us this morning. I don't believe there is an ask. I was going to recommend that the discussions come for budget, request that this be moved to budget discussions, but it sounds like that they're still kind of getting all the information for what that budget ask and grant allocation application will look like. And then I think they'll be coming back to us in the future with perhaps a number and more detailed information. So I don't think there's an actual ask at this time.
Madam Mayor, my understanding of the presentation is their project is scheduled for 2026. As a result, your administration respectfully suggests that you accept the presentation for information and that the town consider a request for financial support as part of the 2026 budget deliberations.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that. Could we have the motion?
My recording secretary was listening because once I say it, I forget it.
That's how I am. I believe that you said that council, that we accept that Historical Society's presentation as information and that we request that the Drayton Valley Historical Society bring forward their
Request.
Request for
Funding.
Funding.
In the 2026 budget.
In the 2020, or actually in the, yeah, in the 20, for 2024 or 2026 budget deliberations.
No.
No, for the Historical Society. So that council accept this Historical Society present, delegation as information and that, now I forget what I said.
Madam Mayor, to the Chair, to Deputy Mayor Evans, I think it's appropriate to have it on the record that council has heard and then it becomes part of the record so that administration, when we do our budget tracking for future budget and we're going to start planning, you know, the three-year, five-year capital budget, that we have a note or a marker in there, you know? And, you know, a year from now, if we haven't heard from the Historical Society, then the administration can contact, give us an update, are you guys going ahead? We need to know and you need to make a presentation to council for the exact money. So that's my thoughts, sir.
To bring forward their budget, their 2026 budget request. Council accept the Historical Society delegation as information and that the Historical Society bring forward their budget, their 2026 budget request. That's okay. Just back it up to Historical Society to bring forward their 2026 budget request. And then just put in request. Perfect. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion for 8.2, please? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I'll move that council accept the Historical Society delegation as information and that the Historical Society to bring forward a 2026 budget request.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment question debate on the motion? Counselor McGee?
One question, is it reasonable to look at it in this next budget cycle, not the entire amount? We, in fact, we don't have any money being asked, but it would seem to me that if we sat down and said, by the way, we're going to have a presentation, next year's budget for a building for the museum, do we want to put aside some dollars today knowing full well that there's a request coming? Or do we just wait for the presentation and then, just a minute thought?
Madam Mayor, to the Chair, to Counselor McGee and to all of council members, the difficulty is anticipating what the request may be. Certainly, if we had some money in the slush fund, which we don't, then I would jump all over this and say, yes, let's put in $50,000 into the budget for 2026. But I think just with the lack of information, it would be prudent just simply to wait. In the meantime, I know council will be looking at budget here very shortly and as part of that process and have a discussion if there's anything that they'd like to earmark for future capital expenditures for community facilities. I'm thinking that this might be one of those projects the community foundation will jump all over because that's what the purpose of that particular funding is to enhance. So I would be sitting down, having meetings with them shortly to say, hey, we've got some major project coming up in the community. This is one we may want to see funded, so.
Thank you very much for that. So there's a motion on the floor to accept this Historical Society's delegation as information and request that they bring forward a 2026 budget request. If there's no further comment question debate, then I'll call the motion, all in favor. That is carried. We'll move into a 10-minute recess and then we'll reconvene our meeting. Okay, wonderful. We will reconvene our meeting back at 10:16 a.m. and we'll jump into our decision items. First up, we have 9.1, Ms. Stone, for Election Candidate Criminal Record Check Bylaw, 2024-01A. That was a long one. Good morning, Ms. Stone.
Good morning, Mayor and Members of Council. During the September 4th, 2024 regular meeting of council, administration was directed to prepare a candidate criminal record check bylaw for the town of Drayton Valley in anticipation of the passing of the Municipal Affairs Statute Amendment Act 2024, is what we call Bill 20. Bill 20 received royal assent on May 30th of this year and came into force upon proclamation in October of this year. The bill sets out new rules for local elections through amendments to the Local Authorities' Elections Act, which establishes the framework for the conduct of elections in Alberta municipalities. The changes to the Elections Act aim to add greater transparency to and trust in local election processes. Section 21.1 of the updated Elections Act states that an elected authority by a bylaw passed prior to December 31st of the year before a year in which a general election is to be held may require a person seeking to be nominated as a candidate to provide a criminal record check. As such, Election Candidate Criminal Record Check Bylaw 2024-01A is being presented to council for first reading.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration this morning? Counselor Clark?
So if you're reading it, I mean, there's not much by way of, okay, so if somebody submits it and there is something on there. But I think, I haven't read the official bill or the whatever. So I'm assuming that prescribes everything in there in terms of how that works and, okay.
Madam, Madam Mayor, to the Chair, to Counselor Clark, I've gone through the bylaw in detail. I commend Jennifer for having drafted up because it captures everything that's in the legislation and sets out very clearly what the process is. If council wishes to proceed with giving all three readings to the bylaw today certainly is appropriate, but if council wishes just to give first reading and by way of first reading, it's shared with the public and then come back at next regular meeting, council for second and third reading, that would be appropriate as well. And that was the process I had sort of envisioned. And never is advisable for council try to rush through legislation. There may be some comments from the community that we want to take in consideration, but at least gives them a chance to respond to their elected officials, whether they think it's a good idea, it's a bad idea, or if there should be some changes also considered in it. So our recommendation for council today is simply give first reading and then we'll bring it back on November 27th for second, third reading. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first question would be, when we discussed that last time, through the points of Alberta legislature, it hasn't passed, the legislature at that time. Has it passed now and it's been stamped?
Through the Chair, to Counselor Gomana, it received royal assent in May and then it came into force upon proclamation in October of this year. So it is in force.
Yep. As of October 31st, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, it is now law. I may relate that though it was passed in May, I was in the city of Chestermere for their municipal by-election and we were advised by Alberta Municipal Affairs to follow the new legislation. One of the significant impacts for all municipalities is that we will be counting the votes by hand. Polls close at 8:00 p.m. in Chestermere on the evening of June 24th. It was not until 4:00 a.m. on June 25th that we were in a position to declare the results of the election. So I imagine that all municipalities, and for that municipality, the next general election will cost them $150,000 of taxpayers' money because people believe that somehow you can hack into an adding machine. Our tabulation system in Canada is much different from the States and that's where this whole premises come from, is that people in the States have this theory that, you know, you can hack into the election machinery in the States and covert an election. It couldn't possibly happen in Canada. And though the most vigorous pleas from the city of Chestermere to the minister and to the premier has left them unresolved, they're moving ahead with this and our next elections will be manually counting the ballots. So if you're running for next election, get lots of sleep the night before because you're going to be up
Very late.
Early in the next morning, so, sorry, just a editorial sidebar.
Thank you. You have a follow-up question?
Yes, please, yeah. I guess the, sorry, lost my thought process there. Regarding the legislature, I've seen that some of the municipalities already went through the bylaw Regarding the legislature, I've seen that some of the municipalities already went through the bylaw and then some of them actually defeated the bylaw. So, so it's up to the municipality to, even it's endorsed by the province. I believe it's up to the municipal to take this or leave it, right?
Right. Madam Mayor, through the Chair, to Counselor Kamana, that's absolutely correct. It's at the discretion. If you think it's an issue in the community, you can pass a bylaw. If you don't think it's an issue or it's appropriate, then I would suggest that you propose first reading of the bylaw and defeat the bylaw. It's as simple as that. And by the way, if the bylaw is not passed before December 31st, it becomes null and void. Council would have to then come back in 2025, propose second reading and defeat it, or you could leave it on the books for a period of two years, after which time it becomes null and void. That's the two processes.
Okay. Final question?
Yes, sorry. Has, has there been something similar for provincial level and federal level that they are proposing or they have passed?
I can answer that through the Chair to Counselor Kamana. There's other provinces in Canada that have this. This is new to Alberta. So in my research in preparing this bylaw today, I had to look at what they were doing in Saskatchewan. And it's been run through our senior leadership, our RCMP and our CPO, just made sure that it's, it's aligning with what's going on in Alberta. But I kind of had to create the wheel on this one because it is brand new for Alberta.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor McGee?
Does anyone know what the cost to get a criminal record check and how long does it take?
I'm not sure on the cost.
I believe it's $10.
Don't give me that. It's gotta be a hundred bucks at least.
No. Yeah.
And it's a simple process?
It's a simple and it's a very common process as well as if you're wanting to volunteer in groups, at schools and everything, it's become pretty much the norm.
And we, did we discuss that at all about the fact that if you wanted to volunteer for schools, we were, it's, it's an enhanced process or something in our CMP office?
No. So if you want to volunteer at schools, you have to have a background check. You have to have a criminal check. And then you also have to have an additional child welfare check as well. And the RCMP is currently doing them. They are a little bit overwhelmed because everywhere does require a background check now. And so this is one of their, I guess, administrative tasks that does take up a lot of their time. So the municipality did consider of taking over such a thing, if that's what you're referencing.
Yeah, I think there was something going on about that. And the, the other question is the, and I think it's answered in the A1 imprisonment, five or more years. So impaired driving doesn't, wouldn't take you out of the equation.
No.
A number of things that are, would be fine, except you're, you're now disclosing, right? That's the difference, is that you're there, you're disclosing it, it's on record. Same as at a school or anything else that comes up, is that, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and I guess just to clarify, Ms. Stone, can maybe help with this a little bit more? That this would just be part of your nomination package now. So when you're filling out your nomination package, you would include with it your criminal background check and it wouldn't be advertised or put in the paper, what would happen? Then it would be stored in the records with your nomination. And if there ever was a concern, then there could be a FOIP request to put through for a resident to look at that if they were, you know, wanting to inquire about a particular candidate.
Yes, Madam Mayor is correct in that. It is just part of the public records. So if anybody wanted to come in and view these documents to inform their, how they would like to vote, it's there for that. There is certain things that will be redacted on that as far as like the nominee's address and things like that. But it is not something that we will be making public posting on the website, releasing something like that. Somebody would have to come in and request the information.
It's Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, members of council? I think you're green. Okay, I'm good. So the bylaw is very specific. First of all, section five, criminal record check must be completed by the RCMP. And section six says the original criminal record check must be included with the nomination papers submitted. And section seven clearly states nomination papers submitted without a criminal record check will be rejected by the returning officer. So those are checks and balances. Wanted to respond to Counselor McGee's comments about criminal record checks in the RCMP. When I met with Staff Sergeant Ryan a week ago over coffee, I provided him with some information. The town of Brooks Police Department have set up an initiative to do all criminal record checks for municipalities. And it's a small fee, looking at a money-making proposition or business case for themselves that would take all of the load off of the administration that the RCMP and know the staff sergeants taking into consideration. So it was some information I brought with me and possibly will help alleviate and ease the burden of administration for that particular activity, which does take up a considerable amount of time by a number of people requesting criminal record checks. So efficiencies, if we can identify and save and maybe make more productive use of our time, all the better.
Just to follow up, in your wisdom, province has put this forward. I suspect it was specifically designed because they had some problems and they tried to, are trying to address it by having everybody be painted with the same brush, which is why I think some municipalities are going, you're making and creating something that you don't need to create. And here we are at the table. And that's just my view.
Madam Mayor, through the Chair, to Counselor McGee and all of council, as we know, every law that is made is made for a very small percentage of the population. There have been several cases that have come to the attention of the Minister and the Department of Municipal Affairs. And don't want to use the word unsavory, but there are certain individuals maybe with less of a good reputation that people have objected to or have questioned after they've been elected. So it's one of those measures. And I think as the legislation says, it's to add greater transparency, create greater trust in local election processes. So it's a reactionary thing to situations that have arisen in the past in some municipalities in the province.
Counselor Kamana, are you making a motion?
No, I have no questions.
Okay.
So regarding the 45 days before, is that, was that part of the guidelines from the province? Or we pick at it ourselves?
Through the Chair to Counselor Kamana, I got that number from my talks with Staff Sergeant Hooper. He recommended like a 45 day, like we, they, just for them to be able to get it done and in, just to kind of provide that information to the public, like it's going to be, it's going to be some time before you can get it. So that's where that came from.
Is there a possibility to, you know, increase it to like 90 days? Just because I'm asking, you know, during the election season, there will be many candidates and there will be some backlog as well. And it will be unfortunate if there's a good candidate that going to submit the nomination papers because they didn't receive the criminal record check on time and they couldn't run for the elections, right? So that's why if they have ample time to get their criminal record check on their hand, then that's kind of a peace of mind in my mind.
Sure. Through the Chair to Counselor Kamana, if it's council's desire to increase that number, that's not a problem. It was just Staff Sergeant Hooper's recommendation that that would be the timeline that they could, the quickest that they could, could provide it to the candidate. So if you want to make it longer, that would be council's prerogative.
Madam Mayor, through the Chair, to Counselor Kamana and all members of council, certainly being, you know, on the side of caution and providing a longer period of time is certainly advisable. I don't know if 90 days would be the right number. I certainly would suggest probably 60 days. That's two full months. So if you're considering running for office, you'd go through that process. And if you decide not to submit your nomination, then it's simply a process you've gone through at that period of time. But giving them more time to be well-prepared and to meet those particular deadlines is certainly recommended and advisable. Absolutely.
Right. And if there's any delays from the RCMP side, is there any caveat for us to not to penalize the candidate for that, right?
Madam Mayor, the penalty is if you don't have a criminal record check with your nominations papers, it's not being accepted. That's the ultimate penalty. If you're planning to run and you weren't aware of it and you submitted without the criminal record check, the returning officer will absolutely reject it and that's the end of it. So the ultimate penalty and sacrifice that you make for not meeting the conditions.
Right. And that's my concern. If it is from the RCMP side that the delay is, then the penalty is for the candidate, not for RCMP, right?
That's correct.
That's, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah. So if the bylaws proposed for first reading and the 45 days is changed to 90 days, administration is comfortable with that if that's the direction council wants to go on. So, very well.
So with discussion around the general five and the 45 days, I think that it's important also to keep in mind that your criminal record background checks are only valid for a certain amount of time too. So with Staff Sergeant Ryan Hoopner suggesting this, that could fall within that. And I do believe that typically in the past, getting a criminal background check's only taken up to about 10 days, I think, at the most. So I think the 45-day window is sufficient. And I mean, if somebody is, if there is somebody with a heavy criminal background and they're awaiting sentencing or trial, that 45 to 90 days could fall within that. If we're, if there is somebody, you know, if that's what they're, the intent of this is for, to have that declared. So for me, I would, I would definitely not look at reconsidering that. And then to double check with Staff Sergeant Hoopner on what the expiry of a criminal record check is. As well as the amendments to the act also changed that you can file your nomination papers as soon as January. So you have ample time to get your criminal background check and hand in your nomination papers for people. So I think that, yeah, you've got, with that change, that candidates can start out there early. If there's no further questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Counselor McGee? Oh, Counselor Clark?
This is a little off track, but, so I know this is called the election candidate criminal record check. I do know for some of the committees we sit on, we do require criminal record checks and child welfare checks. Do we want to just leave that with those committees? And if you're appointed to that committee, you get it done? Or do we just loop in the child welfare check with this? Is a question for council, I guess, and perhaps.
Madam Mayor, through the Chair, to Counselor Clark and to all members of council, as this is specific to the Local Authorities Elections Act, it should be narrow in scope only to the council election and not beyond. If council felt it was necessary, I don't know if we have a bylaw or a policy, but I would suspect it would be easier by council policy for the requirement of criminal record checks for all other boards and committees. So in terms of this particular bylaw, it's very focused as per the legislation.
Perfect. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Oh, no, I'm looking this direction. Oh, you have a question? Or you? Counselor Clark?
Where are we? So I will move that council give first reading to election candidate criminal record check bylaw, 2024-01A, as outlined in AIR 24254, sorry, 252.
Thank you very much for the motion. The only reason I'm doing that is I find that the motions come a lot of the times from my left. So that's why I'm looking to my right a lot. I'm going to be looking to my right a lot today. This, this side of council feels like there's a, they're always putting their hand up. So I've got to split, I got to split it up between the council members. So there is a motion on the floor that council give first reading to election candidate criminal record check, bylaw 2024-01A, as outlined. Is there any comment, question, debate on the motion? Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. I do have a comment. Regarding this, you know, the province is saying that this is for transparency and for the community and the waters to know. And that's absolutely right. You know, that's good that, you know, we are doing something like this. But I guess my concern is that if you're doing it for municipalities, I think we should be doing it for the, the province as well as the federal. So hopefully, this will be rolling out to those levels of government as well. Because I believe that this is more important up there than down here.
Thank you very much for your comment. I would just comment that following Bill 20 and the new rules for, for Local Elections Act, for myself, this is just an added piece of information that now goes in with your nomination package. So I think it, for me, it doesn't change anything. And I just think it gives that, like, like mentioned, that transparency and openness when you're running for office as an elected official. So if there's no further comment, question, debate, then I'll call the motion. All in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, counsel.
So, Madam Mayor, members of council, you can expect this item to be on your council agenda for November 27th for second, third reading. It'd be appropriate now that it's public knowledge. That through your various networks, you may want to canvass your networks for any comments or response or any reaction and have that for discussion on the 27th. So thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Moving along the agenda, we have nine point two, which is the request for decision for the Maitis Local 888 Flag Raising on November 16th. And that is Mr. Vincent presenting this morning.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my pleasure. We have received the request from the Maiti Local 888, dated October 29th, which is part of the package. They're certainly paying tribute to the Right Honourable Louis Riel. And they have requested permission to raise the Maiti flag at Civic Centre on next, this coming Friday, which is, no, Saturday, right, is the 16th. So, sorry, so they're asking to raise a flag on Saturday, November 16th. And I believe it's scheduled for 10:30 a.m. So we've included, we reviewed the Town of Dretton Valley flag policy and it conforms with that particular policy. So respectfully, we are recommending council approve the request from Maiti Local 888 to raise the Maiti flag at Civic Centre to mark the celebration of Maiti Week of November 10th to 16th. And that members of council who are available attend the flag raising ceremony on November 16th. And by the way, Madam Mayor, members of council, I have brought my Maiti sash with me to wear on that particular occasion. It was presented to me in 1992 when I was with the Town of Val Point. I'm very proud of that and my heritage. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much for that. Any comment or any questions for administration this morning? I guess my only question would be, is the request for the, the flag raising and the ceremony would be for Saturday. Typically, we would have someone from Public Works come and assist with that. Is there a problem it being on a Saturday or was there a request for it to do it on another day? Or it's not an issue at all? Okay. So we do have administration available for the 16th. And then I am assuming there's also a request for council and others to be there for the ceremony. Thank you for that. Counselor Kamana, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, for the sake of participation from this side, I would like to move the motion. I would like to move that council approved the request for Matisse Local Eight 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 to raise the Matisse flag at the Civic Centre, mark the celebration of Matisse Week, November tenth to sixteenth, and that members of council who are available attend the flag raising ceremony on November sixteenth. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the motion. Any comment, question, debate? Sure? Go ahead, Counselor McGee.
I was presented a Matisse sash in Quebec. But I don't think the, so the question to you, do you, to wear a sash at a function like this, if you're not Matisse, it seems like you could be taken to task. I'm assuming that you have Matisse status.
Madam Chair, to the Chair to Council McGee, my father was a member of the Alberta Matisse Association. We had not applied for membership. So I don't have official, but by bloodlines, I am, so I'm very proud of it. If you've been awarded something in an honorary capacity, you are permitted to wear that at ceremonial occasions. So, you know, like I got this pen here from the premier of the province and I wear it. It's just a, you know, it's an honor and distinction. Same with medals or, or sashes or anything else that you're awarded. So if you're attending, I would strongly encourage you to wear your sash, without doubt.
Thank you.
Wonderful. So there is a motion on the floor. Any further comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll call the motion. All in favor? That is carried. And now I know probably why I always have this kink in the right side of my neck is because I'm always like this. So thank you for this side of the room making those motions.
Well, Madam Mayor, under the Employee Assistance Program, you know, chiropractic and massage services are covered, so...
Right? Yeah, I'm going to have to, yeah, definitely up my appointments there, for sure. Moving along the agenda, we have a nine point three, the Youth Advisory Committee Member Appointment, Ms. Lola Strand.
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
So this item is in reference to Town Bylaw Two Thousand Twenty-Two slash eighteen dash C, the Youth Advisory Committee, which states the following in Section Two. The purpose of this bylaw is to establish the Youth Advisory Committee operating in accordance with the Town of Drayton Valley Advisory Committee Terms of Reference, which are an addendum to this bylaw and can be amended by council from time to time. The Town of Drayton Valley Youth Advisor Committee Terms of Reference states the following in Section Four, that the composition shall consist of two youth representatives from the school divisions as follows. One representative from Walroes School Division and one representative from St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic School Division, as well as seven community youth representatives between the age of fourteen and twenty-five at the time of appointment or renewal, reflecting the diversity of youth in our community. Therefore, the committee does consist of nine, nine members. We do have some vacancies currently. We did have Mr. Isaiah Rye. His appointment expired this October. He declined reapplying as he's busy with lots of other things currently, as well as Ms. Serena Cardinal also declined reapplying when she was expired. Therefore, and we, we did have one vacant spot already. Therefore, we have three vacant positions currently. We did receive one application from Lily Waldo, who, which is to reapply for a three-year term. She is currently enrolled in Walroes School Division and administration is recommending that she be reappointed for that three-year term. We also received an application from Ms. Alexis McGee, who would be a new applicant. She meets the board application criteria and would like to further engage in the community. Alexis has no preference to length of term. Administration is recommending that Ms. McGee be appointed for a one-year term. Therefore, the recommendation is that council appoint Lily Waldo for a three-year term and Alexis McGee for a one-year term to be on the Youth Advisory Committee as per report AIR dash twenty-four dash two sixty-eight.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? Counselor Clark?
Can I make a motion?
You absolutely can. Really picking things up over here, right?
How's your neck doing now?
Much better.
So I will make the motion that council appoint Lily Waldo for a three-year term and Alexis McGee for a one-year term to the Youth Advisory Committee.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for the motion. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Oh, okay.
Okay. I will read that again. So I will make the motion that council reappoint Lily Waldo for a three-year term ending October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, and Alexis McGee for a one-year term ending October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five to the Youth Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? I would just like to make the comment that it's nice to see that so many youth are getting excited and involved and are wanting to be on our Youth Advisory Committee. So that's fantastic to see and hear. I know a few weeks ago, we were wondering if we would have quorum and, and that maybe there wasn't going to be enough youth that were going to have their say in the community. And now they seem to be lining up, so it's fantastic. If there's no further comment or question on the motion, then I'll call the motion. All in favor? That is carried. Next up, we have nine point four, which is the Drayton Valley and District Family and Community Support Services Board Appointments.
Town Bylaw Two Thousand Eighteen slash fourteen slash B requires that the Drayton Valley and District Family Community Support Services, FCSS Board, consists of seven members, who shall be appointed by resolution of Town Council for either a one, two, or three-year term. When vacancies occurs, applications for FCSS Board membership must meet the criteria stated in the FCSS Bylaw Two Thousand Eighteen slash fourteen slash B, including the place of residence and age group category. As per the FCSS Bylaw, board members are then selected based on their active interest in FCSS activities and community development as a whole. The FCSS Board currently has one position open. The Brazza County Resident Member-at-Large is unfulfilled. Previous member, longtime member, about three terms, the member Ethel Mancow did serve as the Brazza County At-Large resident member. However, she has since moved to town. Therefore, she doesn't meet the criteria, so leaving that position unfilled. But we certainly thank Mrs. Mancow for her long, long term of service on the FCSS Board. So we did receive one application for this position. Administration recommends appointing the following application for recommended term below. Gina Matowski resides in Brazza County and currently volunteers with the FCSS Free Tax Program and has no preference for length of term. So the recommendation is that council appoints Gina Matowski to the Drayton Valley and District Family and Community Support Services Board for a three-year term ending October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven? I think that's her read? Yeah, twenty-twenty-seven.
Twenty-twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? Counselor Kamana, did you want to make a motion?
Yes, please. I would like to make a motion that council appoint Gina Matowski to the Drayton Valley and District Family for a three-year term ending October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you.
Twenty-twenty-seven.
Sorry, twenty-twenty-seven. Yes.
Thank you for the motion. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Just want to say thank you to Ethel Mancow for all of her years of service and sitting on this board. I had the pleasure of sitting on the board with her a few years back. And she was a wonderful addition to the community and all the contributions she's given to, to the, to the Town of Drayton Valley. So thank her, want to thank her for that. So I'll now call the motion on the floor. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Moving along the agenda, nine point five, we have the Town of Drayton Valley and Area Education Management Plan. Mr. Nambyri, good morning.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
So to briefly go over the education management plan, I just thought I would just provide a quick, just summary on what the purpose of the plan was. As you might recollect, this is our third time actually going through this plan with a few, you know, questions, discussions, updates. And in between, we also had a workshop. We were able to basically just have the public engagement, have other stakeholders, post-secondary institutions, community organizations, have a look at the plan and give us a bit of that feedback so we can then as well just update it as need be. And so before you right now is basically the final plan that we have conceptualized for what we think makes sense for the Town of Drayton Valley education. And, and really, so just going through, I guess, a quick debrief on what those implications are without getting bogged down into all the details is that with the approval of this plan, the implications would be, on the first section, on the Approach to Education section, would be for us to look at broadening our education areas of focus. And so this will have us look beyond just trades and healthcare programs and as well just consider other areas of focus where we see interest from some of the people that are applying for programming here in Drayton Valley. The second point then is to also look beyond traditional post-secondary institution partnerships to now also consider community partnerships and industry partnerships. The third part is to deliver partnership enhancement initiatives. Some we've already started, such as the Student Recreation Package. And then look at also, you know, the program cross-promotion and advertising. There's a daycare package, the student locker rentals, and just trying to provide value-add really to some of the partnerships that we have in making sure that the students can benefit from the partnership that we establish. And after that, there was a consideration about establishing partner responsibilities, you know, having the people that we're partnered with, providers, you know, reports, you know, quarterly or annually on information that we think, you know, is worth preserving or just presenting to council as updates. And then the last part is just looking at a staggered approach to healthcare education. And, you know, so for that recommendation, it mostly just has to do with just trying to make sure that we can still deliver programs in such a way where capacity is not an issue. And just making sure we can at least be future-focused on some of these programs that we look at, especially in the healthcare sector. And now on the implications for the CETC utilization. I think the first area really is looking at that repurposing and rebranding of the CETC. So that will be the first implication. And with this one, the options really are to stay with the status quo. As it currently is, it's a multipurpose building. It has education and events and weddings as well. And just sort of working with what we currently have. The proposed item for us for the CETC repurposing, rebranding was the education hub. So just seeing if we can, you know, pivot towards having a hub for all the community partners and post-secondary institutions so that it can be a one-stop shop, really. And so when people come to the CETC, they would be coming to be provided for similar types of services, whether it be the Library, Community Learning Association, Multicultural Society, and, you know, North Lakes College and other post-secondary institutions. And then the last option really is about education without the CETC. And this is about expanding our scope and seeing education as not a, as not something that's fixed to a building, but more of a community involvement. And so this really would have us look at some of the assets that other community groups have. For example, the Rotary House that houses Community Learning Association, the library. They both do exam and vigilance. And, you know, so that's something that's already provided within the CETC and also do academic upgrading. And that's something that we have through our partnership, North Lakes College. There's a Beehive's. And so they have classroom space that they offer. And so this is more about just redirecting some of those services that we already have in the CETC and just pushing them out to other community organizations and seeing if we can have education through that frame of reference. And then the last item really has to do with revision of CETC fees and rates. And so this was something where we just recommended just adjusting some of the rates and fees to try to climb up on the cost recovery threshold and see if there's a way that we can just gain more revenue from the services that we provide and as well from the building itself. The third item, when it comes to implications to, through the education plan, is on the zero-fee tuition. And so we do propose renaming the program to the Tuition Assistance Percery, as well to expanding tuition assistance to Brazza County residents, expanding funding to all accredited Alberta post-secondary institutions, the inclusion of academic upgrading students as part of the people that can receive funding for tuition. And as well, having a student loan eligibility criteria so that these funds do go to people that do have a need for it. And then the last item is about developing primary and secondary areas of focus when it comes to funding. And so just trying to basically create an incentive structure, right, where we target areas of focus for us as a community, where we provide up to five thousand dollars. And then those secondary areas will get up to two thousand five hundred dollars. And so last but not least, the last portion really has to do with the advocacy piece. And in this, we have a proposal to make a formal commitment, Northern Lakes College, to be more or less our anchor tenant, just given how, while we work with them in the partnership that we've had for the past three years and that we look to continue having since we just signed a lease agreement for the next three years again. And the second is to advance and support dual credit and include your model offerings to schools. And so that, this will have us work with, you know, the school divisions and just to see if there's a way that we can be a support for some of the applications that they have for the collegiate model and dual credit. And then the last is to collaborate with Brazza County to advance education. And so this is something we're already doing with the Student Recreation Package, for example. And this will now see us expanding to the Tuition Assistance Percery program and maybe even cost sharing. And so honestly, so this is just a rundown of all the implications that will come with endorsing this plan. And so, yeah, with that said, our recommendation is that council approve the Town of Drayton Valley and Area Education Plan as defined in Report AIR Two Four Dash Two One Six, Two Six One. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, if I may just be permitted some concluding remarks on the presentation, it's one, Kundi. If all you did was read page two of this report, which is the executive summary, you would get significant insight into what effort is being put forward by the Town of Drayton Valley. This report is one of the few reports I've seen recently that isn't filled with fluff. There's no fluff in this report. It is substantial. I commend Kundi and staff for doing that. What is really significant in report, if you went to page sixty-two of your agenda package and in section one, it is project success criteria. I have not seen very often where we include what is the criteria that we're using to measure success. Though I think we could improve that by defining it a little more concretely, it sets out the parameters for council, for our community, for the provincial government to make a judgment call, especially when coming to things like advocacy. But when we talk student enrollment numbers and area going up, we should talk percentage-wise. And I think we can do that. wise, and I think we can do that as a next step in moving forward. You know, the number of visitors, you know, to the C uh, C E T C. So those to me are such important criteria and provides a really sound basis for a significant, uh, you know, uh, achievement. And if go, I'm just trying to find the page here in section uh, two, when we talk about the, the success criterias, excuse me, and we list five of them. We are prepared to be measured and to be held accountable for the money that's being expended and to show success. This is visionary and it is ambitious. And so this is the long game. This is not the short game, folks. So I commend the staff for the excellent work they did and I would echo the recommendation wholeheartedly that council approve. The education management plan has been submitted and I hope that not only members of council, but other people who pick up the council agenda package will have taken the time to read what we're doing, what we're planning to do and how we are envisioning the future uh, for the betterment of our community. So thank you so much for indulging me with those comments, Madam Mayor.
Uh, yeah, I mean, my, one of my first questions and yeah, you're right, this is quite comprehensive and uh, not a whole lot of fluff. It's pretty straightforward. Um, one of my questions is around, you know, we're talking about uh, kind of getting Brazu um, county involved, right? And I guess my question is, I got a couple of questions. One, how do we, how do we get them to match our enthusiasm? Um, and then two, you know, I'm thinking more about, I mean, Brazu County is, is stretches east to west quite a bit, not north to south. Um, we do have a lot of Parkland County and Yellowhead County folks that do come to Drayton Valley uh, on a regular basis and a lot of them for work. Um, so I'm just wondering if there's, is there some way that we can also incorporate portions of Parkland and, and Yellowhead County as well as Brazu?
So through your worship to Councilor Clark, honestly, I think the first step we took a few months back at the joint council meeting and just presenting to Brazu County about the zero fee tuition program was a great first step. I mean, um, following that discussion that we had with them, they did, you know, Brazu County Council did direct administration to bring forward a budget item for them to discuss uh, their own funding for zero fee tuition, right? And so, you know, so this is one of those things where I think um, it will be a slow process with them as we try to just have them see the vision that we have and just have them be a part of it, right? And so the student recreation package is another great example where we both share the aquatic center and the recreation fitness center. And since we do cost sharing with them, just having them be included in those conversations and so that we can provide that service to the University of Calgary and students, that's another great milestone. And uh, and so, yeah, so honestly, I think um, it would just now just be a matter of just seeing like uh, what vision they have as well. We did plan to present this education plan to them, you know, with uh, council's blessing and just see what the county says and, you know, just take things from there. And uh, just regarding your second portion, the second question that you had, so I, I don't know if, you know, some of you are already aware of this, but uh, we have been working with the University of Alberta and they have actually developed a zero fee tuition toolkit. And with that zero fee tuition toolkit, that is something where they're looking to expand. Uh, you know, that sort of, you know, concept or idea of municipalities funding students and they're looking at, you know, Edson, Rocky Mountain House, they're looking at Hinton. And so these are conversations we're having already with the University of Alberta and it's now just a matter of seeing, you know, how the level of enthusiasm that those communities have and just what role we can play in making sure that they can be a part of this ecosystem we're trying to build.
Madam Mayor, if I might also join in and uh, to the Chair of Council, Clark and to all my other members of council, I've been given the combination to the safe where the secret staff of Drayton Valley enthusiasm pills are kept. And so it simply will be a matter of dropping those pills in our neighboring elected officials' coffee so that they catch the enthusiasm that we have. And seriously, it is identifying those members on other neighboring councils who we identify sharing the same passion that we have and having them as ambassadors and advocates for this particular uh, project. So I think two years ago, when I was on Park, with Parkland County, had a counselor from the Tomahawk Interso area by the name of Tracy Melnick. And Tracy was passionate about education and about libraries. And I would think back to those days and say, ah, I know the person we need to talk to and she'll be a great advocate and she'll speak highly of it and motivate some other members of council and support. So I think we have to do a similar approach. Uh, some of this is short-term relationship building, but it's really the long haul, you know, see, helping people see the success that we enjoy. And I think part of this plan will help them see that, that we have the vision, but we also have the metrics for success. And you know what? Everybody wants to be part of the winning team. So you just have to create that so that they want to be part of the, this winning team that we've created here in Drayton Valley. So sorry, my enthusiasm, uh, about minimum time, so.
Okay, and, and just sorry, just one last thought on that. I mean, if, I guess my thoughts are is if you can get the municipality of Drayton Valley, Brazu County, Parkland County, Yellowhead and, and any others we can think of, if you get them all on board, then I think you have a louder voice, of course, right collectively? So I think when you're lobbying, whether it's, you know, provincial government or federal government, more voices are better than just one, right?
And I would add further, Madam Mayor and members of council, there are other partners that we should be considering also, industry, getting the players, you know, the warehouses of the world. We need to also consider our First Nation uh, neighbors, the Metis local. They add a powerful dimension as well, especially when it comes to lobbying for money and that their needs are identified and are being met. It even makes it a stronger consortium in, in the public realm. So I would offer that additionally.
Thank you. Um, I agree that, uh, you know, the, the administration has put a lot of work into, into this and thank you very much for that. I have a few concerns though, unfortunately, so to be skeptic here. Um, the, the first concern is that, you know, of course, we've been working on this portfolio from two thousand seventeen and, and we are now here in twenty twenty-four. Um, we haven't seen a whole lot of uptick um, to fill C E T C. And that's why we were discussing uh, how can we um, separate the education uh, portfolio education initiatives from C E T C and what can we do to, uh, you know, utilize C E T C more, right? I, I don't think uh, I've seen that how, if that's a, I, I see that as, as one line item, but there's no meat under it, uh, which I see how we can uh, look at that more thoroughly. Um, I guess the other thing is uh, that uh, what I've understood so far from the endeavor that we've given, gone through is without provincial backing, it's very hard for us to move this forward as a, as a industry in uh, in our community. Because they are the one who choose where the uh, colleges and, and universities go and they are the one who fund uh, those colleges and, and uh, you know, unless we look at uh, it as a consortium that we used to have before, uh, it will be difficult for us to um, look at moving this forward without their support. Um, on top of that, um, you know, we, we look at the, the zero fee tuition uh, program. I think that's a great program that, that we have had for, for many years where it supports the, the local residents, uh, as well as hopefully bring more students from outside. But I think we need to focus that towards the main areas of need in our community, just like um, healthcare, uh, and uh, just uh, like the early childhood development where there's, there's a big need in our community. So because I don't know, we are, we're going to go through the, the budget cycle in uh, a, a couple of weeks here and uh, you know, that, that will be a, uh, I guess tough uh, conversation that we're gonna have of how we, how we gonna uh, continue with this and what, for what amount, right? So uh, there, there's, I think, a lot more work that we need to do. Um, and thank you very much for the work that you, you and your team has done, Kundi. But um, I think uh, you know, we, we need to have these discussions uh, more and, and as, as a high-level document, this is great, but I, I think we need to uh, have put some meat under it and, and see how, how we can utilize C E T C better, how we can uh, create a education hub in Drayton Valley and what does it need to get there? Just my thoughts, yeah.
Madam Mayor, if I may, and members of council, so there's the whole section uh, two of the reports, C E T C building utilization plan that we deal in depth and it has been long recognized by the, you know, the elected officials sitting at this particular table, people in our administration that we're underutilized, we have a lot of capacity. So there are some, you know, pretty specific action plans outlined in here to move to that state of one hundred percent capacity. That's the ideal. And we are looking at every opportunity to be able to, you know, maximize the terrific building that we have. Like uh, when I did the tour, I was so impressed with it. I said I was gonna move the CEO office over there, maybe we even move all town administration over there, it's such a beautiful building. But if you look at page eighty-four of the report or of your agenda and we talk about the project, uh, project success criteria, as we, once council adopts this plan, the expectation is that you're gonna receive a regular quarterly report and update on how we're moving along that particular continu- continuum of success. I think you will be encouraged. Some of it will be inch by inch, some of it may be, you know, leaps and bounds, but all of it will contribute to, you know, moving along that, that particular uh, paradigm toward the maximum hundred percent, you know, utilization of the building. So again, I'm uh, very impressed with the staff, the thought that's gone into it, the amount of effort to make sure that we have a sound management plan moving forward that council is comfortable with and can endorse despite some of the reservations and our current status. Let me assure you, we're gonna get there, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other comments or questions for administration? Uh, Councilor McGee?
So I'm in agreement with the, the, the going forward and accepting and, and pushing ahead. What I don't see is any particular timelines. We're, we're heading into a budget cycle and we'll get into uh, the next election cycle, which will happen in October next year. Is there, is there a way that we could, uh, we could actually put sort of a, we expect to be here and by the time you get to talking about it in your election uh, conversations, you would be able to use these kinds of things. Um, but so do we see that in a year, year's time?
So through your worship to Councilor McGee, so typically with the plan, following the plan's endorsement, there is an, an implementation plan that can come forward that would detail some of those uh, items. For us, we just didn't want to get down into the details of an implementation plan without first being endorsed. And so, so that's something we certainly provide to council, just to show you what sort of outlook we think it might look like in advancing some of those proposals that we're having the plan.
And lastly, uh, Kundi, uh, your, the conversation around, I'll just go back to it, the uh, to redirect our efforts towards a formal commitment to having Northern Lakes College as the town's anchor education partner in the hopes that Northern Lakes College becomes a regional steward for the Drayton Valley area. Can you just expand a little bit on, on what that actually means?
Through your worship to Councilor McGee, absolutely.
Berkeley? Berkeley? Could you put it up? Uh, no, uh, Kundi's just requesting if you could bring that up, please? The plan, what page, Kundi?
So within the plan itself, this will be definitely towards the end of the pages, but then this is what it basically highlights within the plan itself. So it's part of uh, one of the advocacy items we're looking to propose to council. And so the reason why we thought it made a lot of sense in having a formal commitment to Northern Lakes is because of just how expansive Northern Lakes is and their involvement in smaller rural communities with our main campus right now being in Slave Lake. And just not to mention just the number of people that we've had since two thousand twenty-two to now, we're talking about one hundred and ninety students, right? That have, that, you know, that have been through the Drayton Valley region for Northern Lakes that have been supported, about twenty-two of them have been through this zero fee tuition program. And um, and also in us just being, being comparable to some, some of these other smaller communities, it makes a lot, lot of sense for us. And not to mention that um, Northern Lakes has over fifty years of experience in their supported distance learning model. And so I know this is something that, you know, council wrestles with quite a bit with having pots and seats, but uh, you know, the great thing about this supported distance learning model is that it's one of the great ways in keeping people within rural Alberta without having them to, you know, without having, without needing them to actually move to larger municipalities like Edmonton or Calgary and getting their education. So we actually have, you know, a whole lot of students within Brazu and Drayton Valley that are taking all the Lakes College courses and able to balance that with their full-time jobs and uh, able to stay within the community as surrounded by, you know, family, friends and everything that they like to have within a small community. And so, and so honestly, so for us, it's just one of those things where in talking to them, we had wanted, if you look on the map above Drayton Valley right now, it's a campus Alberta partnership, but then we had wanted to become a college campus so, so that we can sort of expand this network for Northern Lakes College. And in becoming a campus itself, uh, we just think uh, this is something where there's a lot of opportunity really in working Northern Lakes and seeing what that looks like. And within the plan itself, we did talk about working with Northern Lakes and forwarding that collegiate model. So this is something Northern Lakes is already doing. I'm not too sure if you saw the announcement in uh, Kalmar where Northern Lakes is working with their school division in Kalmar and bringing forward the collegiate model. And so we already have a partnership with Northern Lakes, you know, is that something that could do for us right here in Drayton Valley? Uh, not to mention that they also do this already when it comes to dual credit. And so this is something we also mentioned in our plan as well. And so uh, and, and also one great point was one to mention about Northern Lakes is that uh, they basically try to work on their main campus and for the things that they find successful, they expand it to all the other campuses. And in talking to them, one of the things that they were actually looking to do was, you know, international students, for example. And so I know that's been one thing that, you know, council has been quite interested in. And so, so that all these opportunities really that we can leverage with having Northern Lakes as a partner and seeing that they are willing to invest all this time into us. And uh, of the partners, of the partnerships that we have, they're the only one that actually, you know, invested in having someone that's actually works at the you know, invested in having someone that actually works at the CTC as a learning support, a student learning support specialist, and they're also rentable space and office. And uh so yeah, so it's just one of those things where we just want to enhance that partnership, really.
Madam Mayor, members of council, people may not know this, but Northern Lakes College is recognized internationally for the distance learning. In nineteen ninety-nine, the Princess of Thailand, the king's youngest daughter, and her entourage went to Slave Lake to experience firsthand how the Licensed Practical Nurses Program was being provided to distant uh communities because she had a vision to implement such a program for the Heel tribe people in Chiang Mai and Chiang Rai, Thailand. And I had the pleasure of meeting the princess, who, a nominal young lady, three master's degrees and a real bend on education herself. And she adopted that particular model and went back to Thailand and successfully implemented a distance learning program for licensed practical nurses for the people, the Heel tribe people in Chiang Mai, Chiang Rai. A lot of people don't know that particular story. That's the leading edge that they were in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, so. And I have to profess a bias, I served two terms on the Board of Governors for Northern Lakes College, and I know what they're capable of. And further, my wife was a guidance counselor with the college as well. So we have a passion, a connection and a passion.
Well.
So just a final point, then. That sounds really um first class. When you speak to Northern Lakes, would they become, they're currently tenants, is, would there be a desire to take the whole building? Is that, am I, are we going there? And and that would be great, I'm just asking.
So through the worship to Councilor McGee, so that conversation just hasn't been had yet. And uh so this is not something that we've discussed with with them to at length. But outside of them, you know, occupying the space, there are just so many other opportunities we think we can leverage with them, which is what we're particularly just excited about.
Um, so just a couple of questions, just to go off uh what Counselor Clark had mentioned. We can definitely add education in the zero fee um as a joint council output, uh a joint council agenda item to have further discussions. Did Brazo County make a motion to uh join us soon when it comes to the zero fee? I know that we were waiting the last time that this came to council. Was that motion passed?
So through to the mayor, so Brazo County passed a motion to have administration bring it forward as an item during their budget meetings.
Oh.
And so we just haven't had.
They just haven't passed it yet, so it's still, okay.
Exactly, and so we're hoping that, you know, that they do pass it and then work with them, but.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then as well as, you know, we're when working with uh the provincial government as well as Alberta council on getting some letters out and some operating dollars for supporting uh our initiatives definitely at the CTC, so we'll want to make sure that we're including that. You had mentioned Kundi that this is a an education management plan. It doesn't um outline what that um implement implementation plan looks like. So um that would be another suggestion that for our next Economic Development Committee is to maybe add uh education implementation plan to that agenda so we can discuss further ways that we can be moving this forward. Um, and I guess my final question would just be that um that this plan, um if we're accepting it today as uh information, that um there's flexibility in it, that it's not guided. Uh, when we do have the discussion around Northern Lakes College, I can appreciate that uh all that they bring for a post-secondary partner, um and their years of experience and uh knowledge and everything else. But one of the things that I know that this council has worked very hard at was to move away from the regional stewardship. It doesn't serve a community, a rural community like Drayton Valley. It doesn't give us the flexibility or the capability to work with various post-secondary partners as well as bring the programming um that may be a community like Drayton Valley, oil, gas and and forestry. It doesn't support those needs. So I think that we'd still want to work towards that consortium model. When we look at the students, um a hundred and nine students that we've uh serviced through the Northern Lakes program, we've also serviced thousands through um the consortium model that we once had. So I think that that is the desire still, is to make sure that the plan has the flexibility, that we don't go back or we move away. And I know that the province also recognizes that the regional stewardship model doesn't work when it comes to rural communities like Drayton Va- Valley. And that was one of the things that, you know, they helped us and guided us towards, you know, maybe turning into that consortium. So I would just ask that there be that flexibility still.
So, Madam Mayor, we're pleased to submit the recommendation, not to accept this information, but to approve this particular plan, because that'll give us the direction to move forward with the next step, which is, as Kundi said, the implementation tie, the implementation plan with timeframes and milestones that the administration can be accountable for.
Perfect.
Recommendation is to approve the plan as per resolution on the screen.
Wonderful. Is there a member of council that would like to make that motion? Counselor McGee?
I left um here at the council, I would make a motion. Drayton Valley and Area Education. Four two six one.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, any comment, question, debate on the motion? Uh, just again, thank you very much to uh Mr. Namurai and his team for this wonderful document and putting together this uh plan for us. If there's no further comment, then I'll call the motion, all in favor. All opposed? That is carried. Uh, next up, we have nine point six, which is the Immigration Project Plan, uh Rural Renewal Stream Program.
Madam Mayor, could we take just a five-minute?
Oh, absolutely, sure. Before we jump into nine point six, we will take a five-minute recess and then we will reconvene at. I don't, I don't, we'll reconvene in five minutes. Thirty-nine, we have uh two more decision items. Uh, we'll jump back uh into the nine point six Immigration Project Plan Rural Renewal Stream Program.
Oh, hi again. So um the Rural Renewal Stream Program Project Plan. Uh, so similar to the Education Management Plan, the Rural Renewal Stream Project Plan is meant to address the current service that we provide as a municipality. And we were basically just trying to come up with a framework for how we can target the immigration program in such a way that makes sense to us, how we can sort of measure what our success looks like within this program. And just for a brief overview on the immigration program itself. So the town of Drayton Valley, you know, since um March last year, twenty twenty-three, uh has been a designated community to the Rural Renewal Stream Program. And so this program allows for us to work with employers to recruit and retain temporary foreign workers as a pathway towards uh permanent residency. And so in working with employers, we basically have um employee application form that they go through. And uh they come to us when there's a position that they're looking to fill. And for that position they're looking to fill, they can either have someone that's currently working for them or there's someone that they're looking to bring in, whether that's in Canada or abroad. And we help provide a lot of endorsement. And with that endorsement, we basically then allow for that candidate to then apply for provincial nomination, since this is a provincial program. And uh through that nomination, the candidate is then, if successful, allowed to then proceed towards a permanent residency application. And so having said that, you know, there have been quite a few changes to the Rural Renewal Stream Program, some through the government of Alberta and some through us as well. Uh, you know, as council might recollect, on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, we did come to council with a few recommended changes to the program, uh a restriction on the number of endorsements we issue to a hundred within a year and then five as a maximum uh for each employer. We also did come forward to council, asking that uh we only endorse job seekers that are currently living in Drayton Valley so that they have a current Drayton Valley address. And uh we also did talk to council about um enforcing that employers actively recruit either through Indeed, Canada Job Bank. And then lastly, uh we did enforce a minimum amount of time that a business has to be actively operating within Drayton Valley. And we set that minimum to about two years, uh which is something we would check through our business licensing to make sure that businesses that participate are those that have at least been uh active and operating here for at least two years. And so having said that, um, we just thought it made sense to then come forward with a Immigration Project Plan, just to capture some of these changes and as well to speak to um where the program has been thus far. And so uh if you go through the plan itself, really, the three major talking points are, first of all, there is uh the employee application and community endorsement process. And so through that process, um basically highlights what the approval process looks like, what eligibility looks like from our perspective and as well through the province, there's a community endorsement process as well. Then there's a stakeholder management uh portion of the plan where we try to basically highlight who all the stakeholders are within this immigration process that we provide and see what interests that they have and how we can better work with those stakeholders. And then last but not least, the plan sort of goes through those action items and constraints. And um so having said that, I just thought I would highlight quickly that the plan itself is driven by a vision, mission and value. The vision is to draw people together through culture, recreation, hard work, pride and opportunity. And that's coupled with a mission to provide opportunities for all who love life in a place where community pulls together. And this is through the values of adaptability, inclusivity, pride, service excellence and transparency. Uh, having said that, um, as I had mentioned before, so we do have an application process uh in place currently. And and so this is a basic, you know, uh way that the application process sort of works, where an employer first fills out an eligibility form that we provide to them. And through that eligibility form, we basically are able to see whether or not they should continue forward with the process for application. And if they are successful with the eligibility, we then allow for them to submit an application. We review that application and if they do have a position that's vacant, we then, you know, have them post that vacancy. And um if they are fortunate, they do have people apply for that vacancy and they do provide a job offer to that person. And uh once they provide, you know, that job offer for that vacancy, we then ask for all that information just to corroborate that it is a full-time position with a minimum of twelve months. And if that's fine, we then provide a lot of endorsement to that person that they are looking to bring in. And through that endorsement, they then go for nomination. And if successful, then they go for permanent residency. So that's pretty much how the process works, which is sort of laid out in the plan. And then from there, we also thought to just quickly highlight what the program has been for Drayton Valley in the past year. So this all started, you know, March twenty, twenty twenty-three. And so from there to date, we have had ninety-one employers participate through the program. And through that participation, we've had three hundred and forty applications received with three hundred and twelve of them being endorsed. So that's about an eighty-nine percent conversion rate, which we thought was something great to capture because it sort of highlights how serious, you know, these employers are in participating to this program. They are looking to get those endorsements, right? So about thirty-eight outstanding applications, and this could be through cancellations or businesses not proceeding with the applications that they've applied for. And also just thought to quickly highlight that through this um endorsement process, we do have candidates also tell us whether or not they have dependents or family members that they're looking to include in their application when they go for permanent residency. And so we just thought to highlight that of the endorsements we're giving out, we have around three hundred and seventy-six um family members that are looking to be included in applications. And so this is just something to remember, right? That when an employee is endorsed and if they are successful for provincial nomination and permanent residency, that it's not only them that comes to Drayton Valley, but as well their immediate family and dependents that they have. And so with that said, uh honestly, just a quick overview of the data itself of the applications that we've endorsed. And um and so of the people that have applied, I would have seen that, you know, about sixty-four percent of those applications are from people outside Canada, with about thirty-six percent within Canada. And so when we look at that thirty-six percent that are within Canada, about thirty-one percent of them um are candidates that actually live in right here in Drayton Valley. And so the assumption is for those candidates that they have an active job with an employer and they're basically just now looking to have permanent residency so they can stay along in Drayton Valley. And uh, you know, followed by that, we also do have, you know, just, I think, just one candidate that lived in Brazu County. We have some that are within Alberta and then um roughly two percent of the candidates that applied were from outside the province but within Canada itself. And moving on from there, from those uh applicants that we do receive, we did take a look at what their status are, immigration statuses here in Canada. And so, so you know, the large majority, of course, since sixty-four percent are outside Canada, they don't have a valid immigration status in Canada. But for those that do within that thirty-six percent, about nineteen percent of them are on a work permit. Thirteen percent have postgraduate work permit, one percent study permit, uh three percent have a visitor visa. And so this sort of just highlights, I guess, where they are in that progression. Uh, when it comes to just having a status, you know, if you have a visitor visa, you're not allowed to work in Canada. So it's one of those things where it's depending on the status that you have, it does have different implications. This is, you know, if someone that's on a study permit, that means they're primarily here for education, right? They're taking courses, but then they are allowed to work, although it's, it is a little limited. And those that have postgraduate work permit are those that have been, that have finished their studies, that have graduated and now are allowed to then work for, to have a permit for about three years to find gainful employment. And of course, those that have a work permit uh, you know, are currently working here in Drayton Valley. And uh apart from that, we did also just, you know, try to take a look at, you know, what some of the citizenship is when it comes to, you know, those endorsements that were given out. And it's quite clear to see that, you know, um, you know, the Indian, Filipino, Pakistani and Vietnamese uh community are the ones that really do generate the workforce, at least through this program that we see. So about ninety-one point eight percent, right? Just through those four uh citizenries and um and of course seventy-eight percent coming from India, right? So this is just something for us that was quite interesting because, you know, there definitely could be a way towards us you know, providing services towards that type of demographic. And um having said that, you know, when when you do look at the positions that all these people have applied for, it does seem that the majority, for about twenty-eight percent, you know, are in the food and service positions. So we're looking at food counter attendants, food service supervisors, we're talking about cooks. And uh so when you do break down the data, it seems like um those sort of transitory positions that you typically see from places like, you know, Tim Hortons, A and W, McDonald's, other. So those are the sort of franchises that are hiring people. And uh so for the positions that we get, we're definitely seeing more of those um, you know, type of positions. And this, of course, translates into that industry classification. So from all the employees that do participate in the program, you know, about thirty-two percent are from the food and service, nine percent from liquor stores, nine percent from grocery stores and so on and so on. And so, so this pretty much, you know, just highlights at least where the program has been for the past year and about nine months. And uh so the plan itself is just basically now meant to address um what the framework should look like for the town of Drayton Valley and uh basically managing what this um program has been for us thus far. And so having said that, I will go ahead and um recommend that council approve of the Rural Renewal Stream Immigration Project Plan as defined in Report A I R two four dash two seven three.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration, Mr.?
Madam Mayor, just uh some concluding uh remarks uh to Kundi's presentation. First of all, I want to commend Pining and Growth Staff, Kundi and his staff for preparing what I consider another very solid report. Not often do you see reports that can. Not often do you see reports that contain a vision, a mission, and values as he had outlined. The critical part of the report is page one thirteen, one fourteen of your agenda package, which are the project constraints. I think you're aware of it, but it's worth emphasizing. Limited resources, people, and budget. And that's talking about how we operate the program, two, Immigration Canada, and A E I P backlogs. Phenomenal in terms, we can be fairly expeditious in processing these applications. And then to get put into the system, it's a long, torturous process. And I appreciate the anxiety and the impatient that the applicants have. It's a situation out of our control. There are A E I P provincial nomination allotment restrictions. And I found this out some time ago that sometimes people are being given false hope about, oh, you apply and it's automatic. When you find out that the province of Alberta maybe only has three hundred and fifty positions to fill and more than half of them have already been filled, the possibilities of getting approval diminishes significantly. So those are realities that need to be identified and shared with all of the applicants. Affordability and accommodation and service level constraints. So I think it's important for council to understand those particular constraints as we move forward, as we try to do our very best and address the needs of our local businesses in terms of finding these particular team. But in the conclusion on page one fifteen, one sixteen, I think it's really well summed up. Drayton Valley's strategic approach, including setting endorsement limits and prioritizing local residents. And I emphasize local residents for job placements aims to create a sustainable model that balances growth with available resources and infrastructure. Although there are constraints such as housing limitations, service capacity, and external immigration processing backlogs, the action items and proposals put forward by the town help mitigate these challenges while promoting inclusivity and economic resilience. That is the bottom line. And, you know, with a great deal of passion, I echo Koundi's submission that council approved the Rural Renewal Stream Immigration Project Plan. Be pleased to answer any question, provide any clarifications, but undoubtedly, we're going in the right direction.
Thank you for that. Any questions, Councilman McGee?
Yeah, the presentation you made is not in our documents that we have. Did you prepare that?
Yes, through your worship to Councilman McGee, yes, I did prepare this.
I think it's really useful. I'd like a copy of that. You know, I was, it's useful for me to consider and useful for me to know when I'm having discussions about this particular issue that's in our community. It's great. So I appreciate that. And I would also say another no-fluff report. I really appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would echo if we could get a copy ahead. I have a list of questions that were based out of this. I'll go to Councilwoman Gomana first.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the information. I don't think there's been any much changes from the last time we approved the, this was brought to the council, I believe, right? From your recommendations here, there are some changes that the province did with R R S program. But there are some actually, you're proposing that the the town of Drayton Valley put more underneath that limitations. Which ones are that you're proposing that we should be, I guess, superseding the province's recommendations?
So through your worship to Councilor Gomana. So yes, it is correct that the province, I guess, in the beginning, earlier this year, they did, you know, legislate a few changes to the Rural Renewal Stream Program. And so we did incorporate some of those changes to our program itself. And so what actually happened, you might not have been here actually on that day. But so on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, we did, as administration, come forward to council with additional changes to what the province had already changed. And so those changes, they are highlighted in the plan. And, you know, those changes were just to limit the number of endorsements we issue. Just having a restriction since we did observe that we did oversubscribe quite a bit, right, to the program. You know, if you look back on some of these slides on, you know, just the number of applications that we do endorse and that we do receive. And then just, you know, considering what, you know, Pat was talking about when it comes to those allotment restrictions and just making sure that, you know, we're able to kind of address that appropriately is what we thought with that recommendation. And then also, of course, we only endorse job seekers currently living in Drayton Valley. There's another change that we proposed, which was carried. And then also that employers only recruit through Indeed, Canada Job Bank. And lastly, that we enforce a two-year minimum amount of, you know, a business actively operating in Drayton Valley. So those were the four changes that we proposed to council, which were carried. And so, so within this plan itself, since we've, since we passed the program after those changes, we basically just don't know yet how the program, you know, would change based on what we changed about it. So we don't know how the businesses will react. And so the plan was to just have a framework through this project plan. And then, you know, based on how businesses react to it, if things do change, then we can certainly come again and see, you know, if something needs to be changed about some of those changes that we did take early on.
No, thank you for that. Yeah, if I may, that is my concern because we are going beyond the recommendations of the provincial government has put forward. Unfortunately, I was not there for that meeting for some reason that was done when I was on vacation. So but that is my concern where we are going beyond the recommendation set by the province. And for me, this is twofold. The inclusivity and diversity part that we are, we have it in our strategic plan, this sends the wrong message to the community and immigrants around the country when we are capping a hundred endorsements that we are saying that, okay, you know, we're only getting a hundred immigrants to Drayton Valley. On top of that, the other side is growth of the community. So for me, I live by the principle that there's, I'm no better than anybody else, anybody else is no better than me. We all are equal. If that's the case, then we are trying to grow our community. If you're trying to grow our community, we need more people to come to Drayton Valley and settle down in Drayton Valley, right? If, why are we capping, you know, the people that who would like to call Drayton Valley home? That is, that is one side. The other side, if I may, is the supporting of businesses. As we know, there's accounting firms or pharmacies or healthcare providers, you know, coming and asking us to go through this process because they are in need of support for their businesses. So there's a business and economic impact as well because of the limitations that we are putting beyond the limitations that province has proposed. So in right conscience, I can't support this document, unfortunately. But, you know, I value the work that you've done.
So I just have a few questions about this when you, when we look at this slide particularly. So the number of participating employers, ninety-one, with, I guess, the new criteria or restrictions on the program, how many of the ninety-one would fit in here? Like, are those new employers? Are those employers that have been active in the community for over two years? Are they still open? And are those still candidates out of the ninety-one still employed within our community?
So through to your worship, so the number that's up on the screen for the ninety-one employers, that just speaks to just all the employees that have participated since, since March twenty twenty twenty-three up until now. So we just kept a tab on, you know, any and all businesses that have participated in the program. And so, of course, with the new restriction that was passed about, you know, having businesses that have operated for a minimum of two years in Drayton Valley, this would decrease employers that can participate through the program. But again, so this was something that came after the province already legislating that only active businesses in Alberta for a minimum of two years are allowed to participate. We've only changed it to say in Drayton Valley as opposed to the province of Alberta itself. Since we saw that there were a lot of loopholes in how businesses were just registering under different names and in that different name, it had operated for longer than those two years. And so we just thought, okay, why don't you localize this a little bit and just make it Drayton Valley businesses that we can verify through business licenses?
Yeah, okay, perfect. And then also with the project constraints that are listed in here, does the motion, the recommended motion support these constraints? Like, I guess my concern is that with having all the new changes to the province and to the new restrictions that we're putting to this, would we consider pausing the program? Like, when we look at the constraints and we look at all these things, was that ever a consideration? Or do we feel that these recommendations support the constraints that are in here?
So through to your worship, so our approach really was to try to take a phased approach at this immigration program. You know, since coming to work for the town of Drayton Valley, there just hasn't been a plan in place for what immigration is supposed to be. And so this was our first step really at just trying to conceptualize what that looks like. And so, you know, so of course, you know, closing down the program has been a conversation, but we just thought, you know, for the first phase, why don't we actually just try to restrict the program in the way that we think makes sense?
And then see how it goes?
And see how it goes. And, you know, if it's still.
If you can just, for those online, if you could just pause your mic, please?
Oh. Oh, I can imagine, I can imagine. So for the home support, like, was it like twenty hours every two weeks or just?
We should have the power to, I think, mute everyone. Oh, okay. So for those of you online, we're hearing some conversations in the background. If you could all please pause or mute your mics. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, no. Yeah. Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Oh, sorry about that. So, yeah, as I was saying before, I think for us, really, the first phase is just to restrict the program, you know, based on some of those constraints. Those are legitimate constraints, right?
Yeah.
And so we wanted to take them seriously, but as well just not overreact to it and just take a first step and see what the reaction is from the business community and from just, you know, just from the program itself, if we were increasing or decreasing in applications and if we're still being overwhelmed or if there's just not enough. And then coming back to council and saying, hey, so this is what we learned from the restrictions that we gave and sort of certainly take things from there.
And are we engaging with the businesses in the community that are maybe wanting to utilize this program as well as the Chamber of Commerce? Like, we're communicating and we've also communicated the new restrictions as well?
Through to the mayor, yes. So this is something we've been actively communicating to businesses, just so that they know what's coming down the pipeline. And so, yeah, so and we do, of course, talk to the chamber and we do get referrals from the chamber if there are businesses that are inquiring about the program.
Okay, okay, perfect. And then my last question is, how and what are we doing to attract skilled labor workforces? Like, when we look at, I guess, the industries that are up there, when we're looking, when we're talking about, as Councilwoman Gomana had suggested, like doctors, nurses, pharmacists, and things like that, what are we doing now? Is there anything that's included in the plan to attract the skilled labor workforce?
So the great thing about this program is that the province allows each community to personalize it as they see fit. And so there just hasn't been a provision yet for skilled labor workforce. But then, so far, the way it's been working is that it's just based on demand. So based on what employers are looking for and what they need, we then try to just basically accommodate them with that, right? But then, you know, if that's something we definitely want to target, we can certainly, you know, come up with a recommendation and see what that change would look like for businesses.
Perfect. Thank you. Council Clerk?
Really quickly, a couple of questions. One, so there's three hundred and two folks that were endorsed. How many of those folks landed in Drayton or do we have that number?
So through your worship to Councilor Clark, unfortunately, we just don't have that number. We are only evolved up until the endorsement. And then from there, you know, they are then, you know, able to take it to provincial nomination. And, you know, from there, if they are successful, can get permanent residency, but we're just not too sure really what those numbers look like.
And then a couple other kind of nitpicky things. One, we talk about having to be in Drayton Valley. So are we talking within the boundaries of Drayton Valley? Or can it be like just inside the county? Or do we have provisions for that sort of thing? So let's say a county-run operation wants to do something in Drayton Valley at some point. Do we have that latitude?
So we actually, we actually, I think, I'm trying to remember which month it was. We did, if you remember, have a discussion with the county council to have them be included as a community designation for this program. And so, you know, so we did, you know, I did have a chat with Rudy not too long ago. And as you might already know, they just don't have someone in economic development, anyone that can really run the program. But, yeah, that is something, you know, we definitely want where county businesses can be a part of the Rural Renewal Stream Program. It's just now just a matter of, you know, the county sort of figuring out what that looks like and then us making a formal, you know, declaration to the province to then include the county.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the last thing I have is just, you know, I don't see any provisions in there for, let's say, let's say, there's a large-scale company in the province of Alberta, doesn't matter where it is, let's call it Medicine Hat, decides to come up to Drayton Valley and say, hey, we want to build this big facility within the boundaries of Drayton Valley. And we need a hundred and fifty people. And of course, labor is an issue in Alberta. And they say, hey, look, we want to, we want fifty applications. Would that be a consideration outside of the hundred? Or I guess, I just want to look for a little latitude there. I guess I just don't want us to hamstring ourselves from that perspective.
Yeah, through the worship to Councilor Clark. So, I mean, so the thing about the Rural Renewal Stream Program is that, you know, it's very different from other sorts of worker stream programs. And so, you know, if that company has a hundred and fifty employees that they're looking to have endorsed, you know, the plan, just like with the education plan, it is flexible. It's meant to be a flexible plan that we can change from time to time. And so if we did find a need for, you know, helping that employer, we can certainly make amendments to the plan and then have council vote on those amendments. And then we can certainly also, you know, just showcase other programs. I think one thing that we always try to talk to businesses about is the fact that the Rural Renewal Stream is just one among a whole number of other immigration programs available. And so, you know, there might be something federally that might be able to help them with that sort of issue. And we can, we'll definitely talk to them and see what options are available.
Perfect. Is there a member of council like to make a motion? Council Clerk?
I will move that council approve the Rural Renewal Stream Immigration Project Plan as defined in Report A I R twenty-four two seven three.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Councilwoman Gomana?
I would like this recorded, please, the vote.
Did you get that, Ms. Thompson? Thank you very much. Any comment, question, debate? Then I'll call the motion. All in favor, all opposed? That is carried. Okay, and I think lunch is here. We will break for lunch and we will reconvene at one P M. Jumping back into our last decision item and then moving on to administrative council reports and then into closed session. Thank you very much. At one oh three P M, we have one decision item left on our agenda this morning. Our decision item is nine point seven, application for. Our decision item is nine point seven, application for wastewater treatment facility upgrade. Ms. Haskell, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. In two thousand and twenty-one, the town of Drayton Valley was issued a new wastewater treatment approval, which had more stringent parameters that needed to be met by October thirty, sorry, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. This prompted the town to look into treatment options for the high levels of ammonia and phosphorus currently seen in the affluent wastewater. In two thousand and twenty-two, the town piloted the submerged aerated gravel reactor or Sager system, and found that the results yielded were well within our new regulatory limits. In two thousand and twenty-three, the town started on preliminary design and detailed design to eighty percent. In June of two thousand and twenty-three, we submitted our preliminary report to A E E P as mandated, and it was approved by A E P A, sorry. We are now working on getting eighty percent detailed design completed. This will aid in populating the grant application with the Alberta Municipal Water and Wastewater Motion to apply for additional grant funding is required from council to move forward on the wastewater system upgrades. The recommendation is that council direct administration to proceed with the grant application in the amount of fifteen million dollars through Alberta Municipal Water and Wastewater Partnership as outlined in Report AIR twenty-four-two-seven-seven.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions for administration? Do you have a question, Councilor Evans?
Great for me.
Okay, I just have one question before you make the motion. So the request today is, so you can go ahead and apply for a grant. So with that, if we were successful in that, the grant would cover what percentage of the project?
Between thirty-three and thirty-six percent, depending on our population at the time.
So the grant would only cover thirty-three to thirty-six percent, and then it would be up to us to cover the remainder?
At this time, yes.
At this time, okay. Okay, so we're making a motion to go ahead with the grant. Did you have anything to add, Ms. Terry? I guess I, I guess I'm looking at as fifteen million dollars is a lot for this project, and if we're only getting thirty-three percent of those funds, what is the intention for the remainder of the project?
So we are still actively working with Alberta Council to look for additional grant funding that we can stack with the Alberta Municipal Water and Wastewater Partnership. Unfortunately, the federal government is not releasing an ISIP grant for infrastructure upgrades until, I believe, two thousand and twenty-seven. So we still need to proceed with getting this grant secured. However, when we get into budget deliberations, you guys will see that a lot of that project can be contingent on at least seventy percent funding, and then we'll have conversations with the province to kind of clarify that with them and say, we need help, so.
Okay, perfect. Councilor Kamana, do you have a question?
I do, thank you. I guess two thousand and twenty-four, then it says that we will be hopefully constructing or going ahead with the project in two thousand and twenty-six, which will be a new council. So my question is, I guess, when we go through this application process, we are not buying that, you know, going ahead with the project, right? The next council can decide whether, what to do at that time.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilor McGee?
Generally, with a grant, they like you to put some shovels in the ground by a certain length of time, and those kinds of things. Have you projected for that?
So it is a multi-year project. Our hope is to be able to secure at least seventy percent funding, but it'll be a two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, and then partially into two thousand and twenty-seven project. So it is a multi-year project. It's not all the expense in one year. So it will be outlined in our, in our project report when we bring it to council next week or for budget deliberation, so you'll be able to see kind of that line of all of that. We are supposed to be shovels in the ground, two thousand and twenty-five, but of course, we won't know if we're successful in grant funding until about March. So we're still going to be working on design and getting all of our mandates that we need to right now, which is to get to a hundred percent detailed design by February, completed prior to knowing whether or not we've been successful in the grant funding application process. If we're not, Pat and I will have a meeting with the province to discuss our next steps.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the administration has already reached out to the regional transportation engineer to give him a heads up that we've got this application coming forward, subject to the resolution of council today. So they're already alerted to the fact that we're moving ahead with this project, and we need the provincial funding support.
Thank you very much for that. Councilor Evans, did you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that council direct administration to proceed with the grant application for the wastewater facility upgrades in the amount of fifteen million dollars through Alberta Municipal Water and Wastewater Partnership as outlined in Report AIR twenty-four-two-seven-seven.
Any comment, question, debate on the motion? I just have to read the motion, so that council direct administration to proceed with the grant application for the wastewater facility upgrades in the amount of fifteen million dollars. Does that speak to the request of the amount of dollars we're asking through the grant or just the project?
Project.
Okay. Just wondering if that's clear in the motion. Council direct, of fifteen million dollars?
Wastewater facility upgrades or?
Okay, if there's no further, so I'm just reading it as that we're applying for the fifteen million dollars, we're hoping, right? So that's why I'm like, is that correct?
In the end, we should be applying for these grants, hoping that we'll get them, and then when we look at the amount, how much we got for grants, what's left, what we might have to spend. If it is beyond our means at that time, then we can have that discussion about, you know, delaying the grant, or we'll have to pull our grant application. But I think we're, in my mind, we're better off applying and trying to get the funding than saying, well, even if we get thirty-three percent of this, we won't be able to afford the rest, so let's not apply. This doesn't commit us to seeing it through, no matter what, just because we get this particular grant. But it is required, our motion, if we want to apply for it.
Councilor Kamana?
Thank you. And Councilor Evans mentioned that I have a question, I guess, about any repercussions, maybe Pat can answer from his experience. If we go ahead with that, this, and we get the grant, and in the end, if we don't have the means, and we have to pull the grant at that time, would there be any repercussions saying that, you know, kind of a, what's the right word, a black mark or something that, you know, we didn't go through with the grant process?
Madam Mayor, through the chair, to Councilor Kamana and all members of council, no, many municipalities in the province find themselves in that particular situation, have in the past. The department will simply acknowledge, and they have a long list of projects that they haven't been able to fund, that they would use the money for to fund. So our inability to move forward will be somebody else's blessing, but it's never a black mark. They understand the situation municipalities face in funding major capital projects.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Sorry, I'm just going to go back to the motion that was made by Councilor Evans. In our package, the recommendation is that council direct administration to proceed with the grant application, but it states without, in the amount of the fifteen million dollars. I think just for me, that in the amount of the fifteen million dollars, I know you explained it, Councilor Evans, but I feel like that it just ties us more to the commitment of the project. I think that's where my worry is, and maybe it's just me, but... Yeah, and just have the same motion that's in the recommendation of our report as an amendment to the motion? No, just asking to amend the motion to the motion that's in the recommendations? Yeah? Yeah, that sounded really encouraging. Thank you for that. Oh, thank you very much. Okay, any comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll call the motion. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much, and thank you very much for accepting that. So that is it for our decision items. Next up, we have administrative reports. First up is the eleven point one Community and Recreation Service Department report. I'm not going to be reading out the reports as council has had time to go through them in their agenda packages. If you have any questions, Mr. Von Klaveren is here to answer. So speaking to the Community and Recreation Service Department report, are there any questions for administration? Councilor McGee?
Or two. One of the questions I have is under early childhood development. We had a request from ECDC to align with somebody for a fundraising project. I don't see it here, but you're aware of it, right? And so they're, they're, they're doing some fundraising here, but also on a separate, I don't even know what it was, raffle or something like that that they needed to?
Councilor Clark can maybe speak to that?
Yes, we had talked about that, and I can't exactly remember where we landed, other than to say that ECDC board just didn't want to be inhibited by the fact that, hey, let's put all this work in, and then go to council and say, hey, can we do this? And the answer was no. So, so what they're doing currently is just looking to see if, if that sort of thing is possible for municipalities to do.
And administration is aware of that?
A raffle or a fundraiser, okay.
Okay, good, yep. Madam Mayor, I think that's the, the only questions I had, a couple of queries, but I can get that later.
Perfect. Any other questions? Councilor Clark?
I guess the statement with the ECDC, we did get a note yesterday saying that the funding has closed for expansion, so, so for space creation, so we don't think, we're going to kind of go back to the drawing table and, and see what, what that exactly means, if there's going to be other funding available, or if it's just simply closed and we've closed the window and don't have any further opportunities, so.
And, and with that meeting that we had, there was a couple other proposals, one tying into our education portfolio, as well as our model being duplicated within another municipality. So I think maybe that would be something to add for governance and priorities. Agenda item then, maybe, on what those proposals look like, and if we're going to proceed with them. Councilor Clark? Okay, no other questions? Thank you very much for your report. And great news, too, on the physiotherapist that started in the total works. Next up, we have our Municipal Services Department report. Ms. Shelley Terry, are there any questions in regards to what's happening at Public Works and in our parks and recreation? Councilor McGee?
We have closed down the sandy dumps and the day-use washroom for the season. Are we allowing winter stayovers without the use of that facility?
The campground?
Winter campground, yeah.
At our RV park?
We didn't shut down the RV park. It's just the RV dump stations and the washrooms and day use.
Yeah, so you could, we, people can stay over the winter in our, in our campground without the use of?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So, so just to add on that, so they can stay in our campgrounds, but they don't have access to the washrooms or the showers?
No, the day-use washroom, just that portable washroom, the actual washroom facility at the RV dump station, or at the RV park will remain open.
Oh, okay, okay, thanks, thank you.
Oh, okay, clarifying?
Yes, I wasn't sure if that was, I thought that was kind of funny.
Yeah, no, it's just the outhouse in the actual park area.
Oh, I didn't know we had an outhouse there.
Oh, wow, good to know.
Okay. Memorial Park, the fire truck, are we going to get the fire truck out before winter?
Well, that's a Tom question. I, I do know they have plans to get it installed before winter, and I'm thinking they're waiting until the ground is frozen, just so that they don't do any damage to the freshly laid sod. So once that happens, I'm assuming they're probably going to move it in, into place.
Okay. And lastly, the two interactive speed signs, I've seen them. I can't imagine that we haven't done that for the last three or four years, but I appreciate they're now here.
Yeah, thank you.
And they'll work. I tried to trigger it, but no, I was running a little thin that day.
Right, yeah, yeah. Any other questions? Councilor Evans?
Heated recovery cleans.
So on our membranes, we have to do cleans at the water treatment plant every so often. The reason for this is they, they become fouled off and start to plug. So we do maintenance cleans a week, once a week, but every so often, we have to actually do what's called a recovery clean. So we heat the water, add really high concentrations of chemical, and then let it soak for ten hours on our, on our filters, and then put it back into production, and it's now all the, the fouling has been removed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one question around the core safety. It says preparations for core safety audit are in progress. Core safety is very, very expensive, and is this a requirement that we're expecting our contractors to have?
Our contractors are expected to have core safety, absolutely. This is an internal audit, so for the town of Drayton Valley's core safety program.
Yeah.
So it's where our safety department goes around to each of the departments and actually goes through inspections on the facilities, comes up with any deficiencies that we may need safety-wise to implement, and builds a report to keep our core certification.
Oh, okay. Councilor Evans?
I'll just follow that up. Have we ever looked at, and, and every workplace is different, but when I covered safety at Brazel County, I did a financial analysis of the, whether it was worthwhile for us to keep our core. And, and not that I'm, core isn't a worthwhile tool in, in many instances, but have we ever looked at what it costs us to do all the work, bring in all our people for various interviews, do all the inspections, in comparison to what we save through our workers' compensation? Now, again, much of that bill depends on sort of previous history, et cetera, but at, at the county, it saved us money to, to not pursue our core anymore. So we dropped it, to be honest with you. The savings that we got in W C B were less than what we spent to enforce or, or to follow the, the core program.
I have not, and then now it's on this, it is, it is not my direct report department, but I can absolutely talk to the safety department and maybe draft an email response back and, and let you know.
It, you know, it may be worth doing, taking a quick look at it, you know, what we save, how many people do we bring in, how many hours are we taking up? You know, it doesn't need to be all that detailed, but it may be worth looking at. We may end up saving ourselves money by not doing it. And again, I understand the, the reasons behind the core, it keeps you honest, but I think if you've got a, a good safety program to begin with, and a good safety officer overseeing that program, then you can still keep your people safe without the, the core program if, if you're saving significant, significant dollars. Thanks.
I would echo Counselor Evans' remarks there, too. I just think that there could be potential savings there, and as well as when it is a requirement for our contractors to have, it's very, very expensive and extensive, and I just wonder if we're not limiting the contractors that can apply and have the ability to work for the town with being that maybe a restriction versus the W C B?
So let me just clarify it a little bit. So the big projects, we expect those bigger contracting companies?
Michelaini and all them, yeah, of course, yeah.
When we have the smaller businesses that come along, it just requires our team, because we do hold core to manage them, yeah.
So they fall under our core?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And we just monitor them through our safety program, orientate them through our safety program, and, and just keep an eye on them while they're doing the work.
Okay, okay. Councilor Clark?
There is also a C core, the Small Employer Certificate of Recognition, so they don't have to do the full-fledged core like Drayton Valley would. C core is way less intrusive, and I think it's for companies with under ten people, so there are options on that front. So if they have their C core, that's equivalent to a core.
Is it costly?
No, it's not nearly as costly.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Terry? Thank you very much for your report. Next up is the project status report. Mr. Vincent, does anybody have any questions in regards to the monthly status report? councillor McGee?
The only thing I would say is, my guess is it's a little redundant. I don't see any, the X's all seem to be in the middle, but if you read through it a little bit, you can get a little bit more information out of it. I would suggest that we don't need to have it every shot, but my question obviously always will be to the CEO or whoever's sitting in the chair, is there anything that you should highlight here and that we should be aware of? Simple as that.
Madam Mayor, to the Chair, to councillor McGee, and all of council, nothing of any concern. I agree, sir, with your assessment. I am proposing that we'll be bringing it forward on a quarterly basis as opposed to monthly basis. One of the reasons is incrementally, from month to month, a lot may not happen on these particular projects, and it gives council a better feel of the scope of what's, the progress is being satisfied. I would note that, so if you went to page 136 of the agenda package, and this is with regards to the scoreboard in Omni 1, you can see written across the page, this project has been completed. So though it says on track in the bottom, it's, you know, that's a progress one, it's simply this one is now completed. So that would be of note in this particular report.
And a follow-up on that exact page, that the sound system, I happen to be at the game, and hell of a struggle, hell of a struggle in there, our sound system, so I assume it's coming to budget.
It's part of the agreement discussions that Hans and I had with the new owners of the Drayton Valley Thunder, and that will be addressed under that particular agreement. It is a priority, it needs to be addressed shortly, and it will be.
Perfect, yeah. It was a wonderful Friday evening. The events were spectacular, and stands were filled, and that was one of the things that we heard quite a bit that evening was the difficulty in hearing. So good to hear that we're on to some sort of solution there. Okay, if there's no other questions for administrative reports, we'll move to council reports. Just in the essence of time, we're going to be losing a councillor here in a couple minutes. If everyone could send in their council reports to Ms Thompson, that would be fantastic. They will be there then as meeting minute notes for our next council meeting for the public to see. If you could get those into her by the end of the day, that would be fantastic. And then can I get a member of council to accept both department and the council reports as information? Thank you very much, councillor Clark. Next up, we have council items, roundtable discussion. We have two. No. So when we receive information, or when we make a motion to receive this information, do you need to vote on that? Okay, so I will call the motion. All in favor? That is carried. Okay, next up, we have council items, roundtable discussion, 141A. I had put the addition on the agenda this morning, if there was an interest from council to send a letter to the federal government in regards to the proposed regulations that the federal government is putting on the province of Alberta. I just think that this falls under provincial legislation. I feel that the Alberta government is doing what it can, and they're meeting those goals. The expectation of them to reach the goals in the amount of time that the federal government is suggesting just doesn't make much sense, and that I think that if the federal government goes ahead with this, that there could be significant job loss. It will have a huge impact on our economy and on our province. So just wanted to kind of get a feel of what everyone's thinking about this, and if they're in support of sending a letter to the federal government, CCing the province and supporting the province of Alberta. councillor Kamana?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think we should support our backbone industry in our community, and I think unfortunately, federal government doesn't understand the impact that this is going to bring to Alberta as well as the whole country, because Alberta is kind of the backbone of, economic backbone of Canada. So I'm fully in favor of sending a letter.
Perfect, thank you. councillor Clark?
Just one thought is, if we are going to draft a letter, which I'm in support of, is I wonder if we reach out to CAP, the Canadian Association of Petroleum Producers? Because they've got 100 sets of eyes on this, and maybe just get some pointers from them potentially to.
We could craft a letter up and then send it over for the second set of eyes, and then ensure that we're CCing them as well?
Just a thought, yep.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Yeah, we definitely want, I think, take a stand with this. You know, as the premier, I don't know if you all caught her speech the other day, but I don't think I've ever seen her so angry, and very angry. And I mean, I can, think we all can echo those concerns, and as she had stated, national resources fall under provincial legislation, and this just doesn't seem fair, and it seems to be very much targeted at our province. So I think that by supporting this is something that we can definitely get behind, and I think it's a great thing. So is there, are you making a question, comment? Oh, sure, go ahead, councillor Evans.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to let you know I had something to say. Yeah, would Alberta municipalities be sending any kind of letter that you know of? I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's, you know, not that we shouldn't send our own letter, but maybe there's a letter from the members of the Alberta municipalities that we could get behind as well or sign on.
We could send definitely a letter to or an email to Alberta munis to see if they are going to be supporting this and sending in a letter, as well as we might want to reach out to Brazel County and ask them to maybe sign this jointly with us. And we'd think this is something that we would want to put down as urgent. So with the nods that I'm getting in comments, is there a member of council who'd like to make a motion to go ahead with this? Oh, and look at that, Ms Thompson has the motion there already for us. Thank you.
I will make the motion that council direct administration to advocate and send a letter to the federal government to reconsider the new draft regulations put on the province of Alberta.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment?
Should I say regarding the cap to oil and gas?
Sure.
And while we're just updating the resolution, madam mayor, I take it that this letter will be directed to the Prime Minister?
Yes.
And we would CC the Federal Minister of Energy, our MP, the Premier of Alberta, Minister of Energy for Alberta, our MLA, and we would, you know, consult with CAP in crafting of the letter, and we will approach our neighbors, Brazel County, if they would jointly submit this letter with us, and contact Alberta munis if they're staging a taper campaign in response to this.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. councillor Clark had suggested that we add something to the motion. I would be cautious. Yes, Minister of Environment. I would think I would caution on adding anything that would restrict us. I know that when the federal government crafted this new draft regulations, that it doesn't, the language I think that they're using in the cap is to reduce emissions. So we know what the message means, so I think that actually CAP could help us, like you said, you know, put together a letter that would support and outline everything, because I think it's a whole bigger picture.
I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
So that's the wording in, I don't know the exact wording in the new draft regulations. That's why I'm saying maybe we just leave it as put on the province of Alberta, and then we can craft the letter to speak to both the emissions, the cap on the production and the emissions, because I think they have a target in there as well. So that's kind of what, how they're pushing this forward, but as the premier had mentioned, that they're stepping out of their territory. Alberta period. No. It's just the motion. Oh, no, there wasn't, there wasn't a change. I think Nancy was just speedy on typing that Colin had suggested it. So councillor McGee and myself, we're just commenting that we think we want to be careful on how far we extend the motion. So there's a motion on the floor. I'll now call the motion. All in favor? That is carried. Next up for roundtable discussion was B, 141B, was the challenge that came from Drayton Valley Community Learning, and it is a campaign. I just received an email here too, which was great that it spoke to it. It is a campaign challenge, give the shirt off your back. And, oh, I guess we have another, this is a different one that's coming in. We have two challenges now. So one was from Drayton Valley Community Learning, and the other one is from the SOS, is from a different campaign. So we have two challenges actually upon us. So I guess that maybe if we're needing a motion, and we'd like to include council and administration and everybody to partake in the give you the shirt off your back challenge, and then maybe set a date for it, or what are we thinking if we want to join this? councillor Evans? It's called the Give the Shirt Off Your Back Campaign, and it is, of course, I can't open it, I'm just going to open it right now. We are thrilled to announce an exciting opportunity to engage our community in giving back the Give the Shirt Off Your Back Challenge. As part of the Socks or Sweaters Campaign, this unique challenge aims to inspire local businesses like yourself to join us in a meaningful effort to support those in need. So they're asking to give, for you to give lightly-used, gently-used hoodies, sweaters, and then brand-new socks, and then, I don't know when the date is. And then they have drop-off locations, and then they've challenged the town of Drayton Valley, Brazel County, and a few other businesses. So I guess the ask today is, do we want to accept the challenge? Bring it on. Yeah, fantastic. That's the motion. Yeah, do we need a motion, or do we just, it's just for discussion? Just for discussion? Okay, wonderful. So maybe if we want to set a deadline, like, we can reach out just to see if there is a deadline, but if not, if everyone can start bringing in their gently-used sweater, sweatshirts, and brand-new socks or something like that, then we can drop them off at these locations?
Not using my mic much. Do we, do we have time that we could maybe everybody bring something next council meeting and stack it all up and haul it over there at once?
Could we reach out just to find if there is a timeline? I can forward you the email. I'm not sure who all got the email, just to see.
Then we'll communicate that to everybody in the organization and council.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. councillor Kamana?
I guess, thank you. Part of the challenge is actually taking the shirt off and doing a video show like that.
Oh, so we have to do it next Wednesday, is, yeah, take it off? Oh.
Yeah, you know, wear something that you can donate, and then.
Make sure you have something under.
Exactly, of course, yeah.
Okay, I'll forward this on. As Mr Vincent had suggested, we'll get the information out when the deadline is, and if we can set it up for next Wednesday, we'll do it next Wednesday, videotape it, and just let them know that the challenge has been accepted. Wonderful. So that is it for our council-initiated items. Next, I think what I'll do is, we have two information items before we move into closed. One is the Brazel Foundation Meeting Minute, September 19th, as well as the 2024 Minister La Grange response to Alberta council. Is our member of council like to accept this as information? Thank you very much. And is our member of council like to move us into closed under FOIP section?
Please.
See, and I'm just so used to not having to vote on information items.
Yeah, if you would.
Okay, well, I'm going to call the motion to accept those as information, all in favor.
Thank you very much.
That is carried. Okay, and then if I can get a member of council to move us in closed, that was you, councillor Kamana? I think the motion is up there.
I would like to make a motion that council moving to closed at 138, according to FOIP section 24.1A and C.
Thank you very much for that. Comment, question, debate on the motion? I'll call the motion. All in favor? That is carried.